We are live.
Thank you, Nikki. Good evening and welcome to the virtual meeting of the City of Dublin Planning and Zoning Commission. The Ohio Legislature passed several emergency laws to address the pandemic, including the ability for public entities to conduct virtual meetings. We appreciate this ability to maintain our continuity of government and will be holding our meetings online and live streaming on YouTube until further notice. You can access the live stream on the city's website. We welcome your comments on cases. In order to submit any questions or comments during the meeting, please use the form under the streaming video on the city's website. Your questions and comments will be relayed to the commission by the meeting moderator. Please provide a valid name and address when submitting comments and please refrain from making any inappropriate comments. We want to accommodate public participation and comments to the greatest extent possible. We appreciate your patience. Ms. Beal, will you please? I call the meeting to order and we're going to do Pledge of Allegiance first for those of you who have your video on. If you could turn your video off while we present the flag. Once the flag is presented, if you could turn your audio on and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A little more choppy when we're not together, but I appreciate the opportunity to make the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Beal, at this time, will you please call a vote?
Yes, Ms. Fox?
Here.
Mr. Fishman?
Here.
Ms. Call?
Here.
Mr. Supalak?
Here.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Mr. Schneer? Mr. Schneer?
Here.
Mr. Grimes?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. We have documents for tonight and minutes from the December 10th, 2020 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the documents into tonight?
Remove.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Beal?
Mr. Grimes? Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Thank you, Ms. Beal. The Planning and Zoning Commission is an advisory board to city council when rezoning and planning of property are under consideration. In such cases, the city council will receive recommendations from the commission. In other cases, the commission has the final decision-making responsibility. Anyone who intends to address the commission on any of these administrative cases must be sworn in. The agenda order is typically determined at the beginning of the meeting by the chair. The rules and regulations of the Planning and Zoning Commission state that no new agenda items are to be introduced after 10:30 p.m. Tonight, one case has been postponed to the January 21st, 2021 meeting, and that's case number 520-184 PDP for German Honda. There are two remaining eligible cases for the consent agenda this evening. That's case number 220-169 CU for Brazilianology and case 320-178 MSP for the Dublin Plaza. Does anyone wish to push, to pull either of these cases from the consent agenda? Ms. Fox?
The second one, I don't, I don't want a presentation on it, but I do have some comments to make about it. So I don't think we need the presentation, but I do have some comments to make concerning that one.
Matt, looking to you, should we handle it independently or should we take comments and then move forward with the consent agenda?
So, Ms. Call, I think it would be appropriate for you to read the case into the record and then the commission can have any dialogue. And I am happy to bring up any plans or text I'd like to review. The applicant is also here as well this evening.
Thank you. Matt, any comments on proceeding?
I concur with Nikki's suggestion. Sorry, I couldn't get my screen fired back up here.
For Dublin Plaza, we have 225 West Bridge Street. That's the master sign plan, case 20-178 MSP. This application is a request for revision to a previously approved master sign plan for an existing shopping center zoned Bridge Street District commercial. This 9.17 acre site is southwest of the intersection of West Bridge Street with Brant Road. Nikki, Jane mentioned that she does not need a presentation, but Jane, do you want to proceed with your questions or comments?
Sure, I do. You know, I have no problem with the request for, that the applicant is asking for, but in going and visiting the plaza, and I see it and I'm there frequently, I did notice some things that in the original master sign plan criteria that probably need to be addressed by the landlord. One of them is in the general sign criteria. It talks about the lighting. And the lighting at present, the gooseneck lights are all, need to be maintained. They need to be paint coated. I would say at least half of them have no paint on them, so half of, half of the fixture is painted, the other half is worn off. And then I happened to be over there in the evening this week and I noticed that the light bulbs are all a different light bulb type. So we have some that are LED, some that are incandescent, and it gives a very inconsistent image across the front of the property. So I'm just requesting that is, that the landlord would agree to coating those light fixtures so they have a nice consistent character because it is part of the sign package and that we have a consistent light bulb and a soft light across the front as was originally intended. And then I know that during this pandemic, we are allowing quite a bit more signage, but even prior to the pandemic, I want to make a note that there's quite a bit of signage at the cart perouse that is not part of the sign package. And so I would hope that that would be removed at some point in the future. So those are my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Ms. Barton, do you have any comments regarding Ms. Fox's concerns or is the applicant hearing consent to those?
So the applicant is here this evening and I would defer to him regarding the landlord's responsibility for those light fixtures and where that lies.
Hi, excuse me. My name is Charlie Frost. I work with Casto. We're the owners of the shopping center. I don't have a problem with the concerns. We certainly would need to paint those. That seems like a fair comment. Light bulbs, I do need to check. I'm assuming that there's a reason, but maybe they're just, when one burns out, they're putting in new LEDs, so there's a consistency there. We certainly can.
So Charlie, you were breaking up a little bit there, but I believe what you said is you acknowledged the ideas. Did understand, you know, some of the history behind the light bulbs and why they were, they were different, but no objections to Ms. Fox's requests?
Sorry, I broke up the entire, what you just said. I barely heard anything. Could you try one more?
Got it. I had said you had broken up, so we didn't hear exactly what you said, but I believe what we heard was there was no landlord knowledge as to why the lights were changed out or that sort of thing and that there was no objections to the concerns for the paint at the light.
We can then. Nikki, could you reach out to the applicant to see if we could move that discussion to later in the meeting?
Yeah. Or you might want to reach out to him via chat as if you can, see if you can get him on the, on the chat because sometimes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Cook. We have disabled the chat this evening just for a public record purpose. And yes, Ms. Call, let's postpone this to later in the agenda and we'll be in touch with them.
Okay.
All right. Looking to you, is this part of the consent agenda? Should we move forward with the next case, not moving forward on the consent agenda items until later?
That would be within the commission's discretion. I don't know if there are other applicants from the consent agenda here. But since this has been pulled, the commission could also act on any other consent agenda item and just amend the agenda to address this later.
All right. So seeing as we're struggling a little bit with the case 20-178 MSP, I entered a motion for Brazilianology, case 20169 from the consent calendar.
Remove.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Supalak?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Schneer?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Thank you. We will move on to informal case one. This is All Our Friends, PID 273-012214, 20-195 INF for an informal review. This application is a request for informal review and feedback for an approximately 8,100 square foot building zoned planned commerce district, Thomas Kohler SubArea B1. The 3.32 acre site is west of Emerald Parkway, approximately 450 feet northwest of the intersection with Parkwood Place. And Nikki, it looks like you have this presentation also this evening.
I do. Thank you. Just give me one moment. I'll go and pull that up. Okay. Good evening. This is a request for review and informal feedback for a potential new construction proposal located on an approximately three acre site within the Thomas Kohler Planned Commerce District. This district is developed in various subareas. This is the northernmost subarea of the district. Immediately to the south of this site is an existing bank and office building. And immediately to the east of this site is an existing daycare facility. The property to the north presently is undeveloped and the site is also surrounded by existing single-family neighborhoods. In detail, you can see the site has frontage along Emerald Parkway, which is provided via a flag with 60 feet of frontage. The primary of the lot is located to the rear of that existing daycare use, which is sighted along Emerald Parkway. There is a shared stormwater management basin located in the northeast corner of this lot with a tree row located along the north and east property lines, as well as an established shared use path along the west property line. These are the existing conditions of the site. As you'll note, it does, it is largely flat and with the exception of the existing basin, completely undeveloped. Staff has provided some images of the surrounding character. The my federal credit union bank and office building is located on the right-hand side of your screen. You'll notice here this building is primarily constructed of brick and stone with a standing seam metal roof. The gardener school is the right-hand image on your screen. This is the building which is immediately in front of the proposed All Our Friends building. This building is primarily brick and stone with warm neutral hues. This is the proposed site plan. The applicant is proposing this facility to provide services and training for adults with disabilities. This use is considered either an adult daycare or a vocational school. And as this planned district permits the uses within SO, adult daycares are permitted in SO, although vocational schools would require a conditional use. Staff is asking the commission this evening to consider whether this is an appropriate use for this site, given the surrounding context. The new construction building is proposed to be approximately 8,000 square feet in size and is located on the western portion of the site with parking located forward of the building. The applicant is proposing approximately 60 parking spaces. If this use were classified as an adult daycare facility, the applicant would be required to provide one space per six students and one space per teacher. The applicant has not provided operational details, including number of employees and clients at this facility, nor are they required to with the formal review. However, additional analysis regarding the potential excess of parking would be required. Staff is asking the Planning and Zoning Commission to provide comments on both the site layout and the proposed parking amount. Finally, the applicant is seeking feedback regarding the western portion of the site. As is shown on the aerial, there is existing vegetation as well as a shared use path. The development text, which was originally established for this area in the 1990s, requires that a split rail fence detail be located along the shared use path. The property to the south has not provided that either and it would seem inconsistent to require it in this case. However, the commission would be required to approve a minor text modification with a future final development plan. The applicant has provided conceptual architectural character for the commission's feedback tonight. The form of the building includes pitched roofs with a masonry base. Generally, the color palette of the building is cool grays and blues. The building does include these architectural features which allow opportunities for signage. This is the rear elevation of the building, which provides that front gable entry feature and the side elevations, which you'll see here duplicate that stone architectural feature. Staff is recommending the following discussion questions with the addition of the discussion question regarding site layout. It is important to note in regards to question three, the development text only permits sodium light bulbs for light fixtures. Therefore, the commission would have to be supportive of a minor text modification to permit modern light fixtures with the final development plan. We have already covered questions four and five in detail and then, of course, any other items raised by the commission this evening for the applicant's consideration. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, I know our applicant is here as well tonight.
Thank you, Nikki. The applicant who is here from All Our Friends this evening. Hi, Mr. Kirk. Do you have a presentation or would you like to make a statement before we jump into questions from the commission?
Yeah, Chris Jolly is here from Darren Ranker Architects and so I want to just ask him a couple of things first to start out. Chris, as Nikki was presenting, it looked like, correct me if I'm wrong, does he have the most recent layout, especially for the parking lot? Because I thought we had reduced the number of parking spaces.
He had uploaded a revised site plan and it should be, I think it was 33 spaces. Generally, the configuration is similar. I don't think you can really see this at all, but it's, you can see the layout there. We basically eliminated the parking spots in the center and condensed a little bit. Provide flow for fire trucks and also just eliminated some additional parking.
Right. Regarding your comment, Nikki, on staffing and client size, the facility would likely not ever accommodate more than 60 individuals. So the requirement for one space per six, I think, would only require 10 at a minimum. I'm not sure what the code states with respect to maximum, so.
Most all individuals, nearly 100% probably will be arriving via shuttle buses and vans. They will be picked up from their homes in the mornings and then drop back off in the afternoons. So it'll be very few actual clients there as utilizing the parking lot on basis, mostly for staff.
Yeah, I also, I also wanted to show this. I'm going to try to get it in the picture frame. This is a building on the corner of Emerald Parkway and Innovation, which is, which is very close. It's kind of almost like catty corner to where the building would be. And this is kind of consistent with the look of the buildings that we have now. I know it's not necessarily the look of the immediate neighbors there, meaning the Child's Daycare Center and the Credit Union. But, but this look here, again, that's the corner of Emerald and Innovation and it's been pretty close by. I thought the look was very consistent with, you know, sort of what our standard exterior look is, which Chris can work on the details of that. I think, I think that's all I wanted to kind of add, I guess, and I'm open to answer any questions that anyone may have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Cook and Mr. Jolly. Typically, all the last 10 questions, but since we've already started talking about this, can you speak to the staff level? You spoke to not accommodating more than 60 people, but do you have an educated guess on the staff count?
Yeah, so you're going to have approximately 10 staff and approximately 50 individuals.
Thank you.
So your ratio is going to be about one to five there on average.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. All right. At this time, looking to the commission for questions for staff or for the applicant.
I have one for staff. Shouldn't this be, we looked at it, is it maybe a conditional use or not a conditional use? Shouldn't it be a conditional use since the, it's such a small amount of people and low parking? So if the use changes, there would have to be some changes in the building as far as parking and so on. So wouldn't this be qualified as a conditional use?
So this could be determined in one of two ways, either as an adult daycare or as a vocational school. Part of that determination obviously relies on how staff has designated this previously, which is as a vocational school, realizing that this use does provide some adult daycare services for clients that they serve. So that is something that we will resolve with the applicant team prior to their final development plan. Although I would likely anticipate a conditional use before the Planning and Zoning Commission with the final development plan.
Okay. I think that makes more sense for the use because in 20 years, if the use changes, there might have to be a lot of alterations, especially with parking.
Could I make a comment?
Mr. Cook?
Okay, so we are, we are building or looking to build another facility several miles to the south in the Arlington Gate Plaza area. And that one has been designated as the Vocational Training Center because at the time we had the first discussion with Dublin, we were sort of going back and forth on, do we put the mix? Do we have one, one and one the other? And where we landed on that was that the Arlington Gate facility was going to be Vocational Training Center and the Dublin facility was going to be Day Support. So it's not really a mixed use there. It's really an adult day support center, similar to what we have there now in Dublin off of Wilcox Place. I realize what, what Mr. Fishman is saying about the potential change of use. I don't see that for the foreseeable future and I don't think the vocational plays into it at this location.
Nikki, can you clarify between the two potential uses? What parking requirements would be for those uses? Yeah, so vocational school parking requirements are not explicitly outlined in the code. We do have them for trade schools, which I think may be a little high. So this is something I think we would potentially resolve and it sounds like the applicant has worked toward resolving that. The most straightforward parking calculation is the daycare parking calculation, which is one parking space per six students and one space per teacher.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barton. Looking back to the commission, Jane?
Yes, I had some questions. One, I think it would be really helpful to actually see what your site plan is now because I'm, as I've visited the site, the first impression that I had was that the building was set so far back on the lot, so far away from any frontage that, and the approach, that you would just be looking over to see if parking. So if this is the new one, or if this is the one you're proposing, I think it's a better sighting. I was going to ask you to move the building forward and to try to reduce the parking. So you've done that and I think that's important. I am concerned that your roof pitch is not meeting, meeting the parameters of the, of the others. And also, I'm, I'm fine with the, with the adult use of it for your, for your folks. I don't think that's a problem. And I'm okay with utilizing the lighting, newer lighting requirements. And also back there, there is no, there is no split rail fence along any of it. But the large area to the west will eventually possibly be residential. And I don't know, Nikki, if this is possible, but my concern there that the reason the split rail fence was placed in the text in the first place was to create some sort of a boundary between residential and commercial. So I think some note should be made that if residential were ever to develop there and the request by the residential was to, to adhere to the text that the split rail fence would be constructed, that it would be a burden on the property, the commercial property owner to participate in making sure that that happened. There was a reason for that in the first place and why it doesn't get done, but I don't think that the protection should be removed on a permanent basis, but certainly. But certainly, if, if there's not a need for it now, I think it should be noted that it, it should be required in the future. In looking at the contextual pictures and driving by, I noticed that there was quite a bit more primary materials in the architecture and the adjacent buildings than there is in this one proposed. And a lot, and it is not, I think the text requires full thickness brick. I'd like staff to clarify that, but you're proposing a brick veneer, split brick, and it's not occurring on the others, I don't believe. I also, stucco is quite a bit on this particular plan. I think probably more so than on any other building adjacent to it. So my suggestion would be to increase the articulation of the building elements. I could not determine by looking at the plans almost where the entrance was, because it's so nondescript. And I understand that this is early and you're asking our comments on it. So it's not a criticism, it's just, it's just as I looked at it, I felt as if, as I looked at the surrounding buildings, and the one at the Gardner School that we showed on that image was a side view, there is quite a much more impressive front door to that building. So I do think that it's important that you, especially when you're set back, when you sit back off of the, of the roadway, that I think the, that the front door should, should be a little bit more impressive. And I would encourage the use of more natural materials and not, not so much manufactured stones, I guess. The other, other kind of questions. The, you, you will have 60 individuals there during the daycare, and I noticed that, especially since you're moving the building forward, you have quite a nice yard area in the back, but a very small covered patio. And one of the things that Planning and Zoning is looking at as we allow new development in the, in the area is the use of our sites for social connection, mobility, connectivity. And I'm not saying that, that your clientele would necessarily be using our, our walkways. They may very well, but they may very well be using that covered porch. And I would suggest that you, for its use, you would improve or increase the amount of outdoor space that is usable in the, in this architecture, because I think that, especially now in the pandemic, we've found that people need to use these outdoor spaces, and that's a pretty small outdoor space. You know, I think just the primary materials, the articulation, making sure the height is no more than 35 foot, and adhering to the slope of the roof requirements are my thoughts.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. As we've jumped into the, the discussion portion, Nikki, just making sure, I know that we didn't receive any advance public comments, but have we received any since the meeting?
We have not.
Thank you. All right. For the remaining commission discussion, we will combine questions and discussion. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to go next?
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Call. I think, I think Ms. Fox actually got everything. I can say ditto to a few things, though, that were on my list. I too am okay with the use of this property for this purpose. The layout agreed, agree on the layout and the parking requirements as well. You know, I think the split rail fence is, is a characteristic element that I see throughout Dublin as I drive around. So I'm with Jane on saying something along the lines of not needed now, but if there is in the future a residential that backs to this, that there could be that, that use of, of this element, split rail fence for that separation of, of properties. As far as the architects, architectural elements go, ditto to Jane on those. I do, I do like the, I do like the concept of keeping the colors consistent, you know, with the surrounding properties, just from a visual perspective, but that's just an opinion. I'd like to hear what everyone else has to say on the colors, kind of the cool gray tones, I think, is what you're proposing versus the warmer tones that are in some of the adjacent properties. That would not be my preference, but again, it's not, it's not a code thing necessarily. So I think that's it. The one thing we didn't talk about that wasn't in your questions, Nikki, but was in the paperwork from the applicant, was about the sidewalk connection. Is that something for discussion as well still, or no?
Yeah, you're certainly, certainly welcome to have that discussion. The applicant is required by the building code to provide certain connections. So you are able to provide them input on that?
So the question from the applicant was, is it acceptable to have the sidewalk connection to the public way be placed within the parking setback, correct?
Yes, and that would be permitted per the code.
Yes, got it. Okay, I'm on board with that then. I don't have anything else right now.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Bryant, do you want to go next?
I was wondering what the issues were surrounding the lighting.
Yeah, so in terms of lighting, the development text was written in the late 1990s, and at that time, sodium halide bulbs were the predominant choice. And given advancements in technology, obviously, as this is new construction proposal, we would anticipate that LED fixtures would be used. The commission would be supportive of a text modification to that requirement with the final development plan. Staff would bring that forward with support, but the applicant is seeking feedback from you all, whether you would support that.
Thank you. I'd like to see a little more consistency with those surrounding buildings too, as far as the exterior. You don't want to get too far afield, but until you see what it actually is being proposed, with me, I can't quite compare it unless I see it. And then along the fencing, you know, I, I visited the site this week, there was a lot of people on the path. So whether you have a development next door or not yet, you're still seeing probably in better weather, even in higher volume of people using the path. Although, you know, I'm not so sure you want to suspend the need for fencing now, but you know, you want to have access through there. Probably from the business's perspective, you would want to have something that says, okay, people, you stay on the path and, you know, don't come in, come onto our property from the path. So I, that's, I, I might consider, you know, of course, you, you've got to look at all the other surrounding property owners too and say, it's time to put the fence in if we were to say, this development, put the fence in. So that's something to, to think about. I like the, the, the location for this type of business. I think that's a good location, safe location, great, great accessibility to the region, I think. Tucked in the back, though, I wonder how people are going to know you're back there. That may be a challenge to you, but then, of course, over time, you have probably a limited number of people that will all know where you are. But I'm just thinking of, of future uses, if you outgrow that, that, that facility and it's going to be used for something else. Just, just a thought. But I do think it's a great location for this, so I, I think that's a good project for this, this spot. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Mr. Schneier?
I, I'm actually, I'm in favor of, of the project and the location. I think it's, that's an area that has, we've all seen undergo some significant development, and it's an appropriate place for that development. And again, I, I think that Jane's covered the major points, so I, at this point, I don't see any, I foresee any problems and just congratulate the applicants on pursuing this venture.
Thank you, Mr. Schneier. Mr. Suplack?
I'm going to sort of double down on, on a handful of different comments from a variety of different people, and maybe I'm going to double down in, in a little bit of a different way. I'm going to go to, how about this? You heard it, the connection and mobility, so we really like our sidewalks to all sort of start makes, making sense and connect into the city and allow people to walk and those types of things. I'm all in favor of this sidewalk you have. You're trying to connect out to Emerald Parkway, but boy, if that just doesn't want to connect back to that trailway in the back, and that allows, you know, mom, mom and pop walking, walking their baby allows them to turn and get out to Emerald as well. So you, you, for your function, might not need access, might not need to connect back there. I can sort of, I think I'm going to pick up on that, but for the city and for the sake of sort of connecting the fabric, it would be silly not to extend back there, one. Two, the, Jane did a good job advocating for primary materials. Generally, your palette is all the right things, right? There's some stucco, there's some brick, there's some stone. The, the brick, I know you're, you're saying it's a brick veneer, you know, that's an easy, easy trip to start thinking that's a face, a thin brick. I know you guys aren't doing that, but, but the stone and the brick, those primary materials, yeah, we, we always are going to advocate for, can we get more of them? I will also double down on the fact that I worry your front entrance is, as Jane, as Jane said, it's not intuitive, and, and I think, I think you'll sort of regret that long-term if you, if you were to sort of build this building. I think you still have time now to really sort of make some, something better up there that sort of, obviously articulates, mentally articulates the, the front entry in a way that's very natural and very intuitive. I think you want to, want to do that. Maybe there's a question in that, I, I, I wonder if your floor plan is at this point drawn or complete, or if you still have that leeway to sort of massage how some of these elements, elements go. Because I also think relative to the entry, I mean, you've, you pretty much have a, this is symmetrical in four, in largely four ways, aside from a couple appendages, right? Like it's, it's just a sort of ziggurat massing. I do think you have opportunity relative to an entryway set to one side, start to draw in some asymmet, symmetry that starts to make this, the massing of all this, the materials all start to work better. Relative to the situation of the building itself, I, I see that you have, it looks like you have sidewalk right up, right up to the building, no landscaping between the sidewalk and the building. I think certain things like that, it's obviously early, but, but I think those touches, adding the landscape between the sidewalk and the building, starting to sort of articulate your, your front entry different, and in a more sort of naturally intuitive way, will really do wonders for it. It'll start to appease its request for, you know what I mean, making, making the primary materials a little more prominent and prevalent on the front. I, I do agree with, and I know there's a note in it, Nikki, in, in the text, I, I do worry about how the signage is going to work for you all. I think obviously that's going to be an ongoing conversation, what with a sign, a sign right where you pull into your parking lot. I don't know if that's the right spot. It sounds like they might be trying to get you a spot out by the street relative to this, the flag on the sort of parcel. But all of that will take some fine tuning and work to do. I don't have a problem with the adjustment of the text to mix the sodium lights. Sodium lights are horrible lights, everybody. They're the, they're the old yellow-orange highway lights, right? That we know they're, they are kind of nasty, so all, all those are, are good adjustments. And yeah, I think that's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Schneier. Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, I think it's all been said, to use Mark's word, double down. I, I, I really, I can tell the difference between slim brick and regular brick, and so I would really encourage when you come back to have more brick, less stucco, real brick, and, and make it match what the other buildings are. The other things I agree with, I, you talk about a sidewalk to the other bike path, I would suggest maybe a bike path to the sidewalk. In other words, he could do a bike, extend our bike path and go up to Emerald Parkway instead of the sidewalk, and then he could maybe curve it and landscape it, and, and like I said, save some money. But also, I'm concerned about the height and, and blending with the other buildings. And again, the architecture, I think, needs to be tweaked as far as brick and stone rather, and a lot less stucco. So also, my concern about the fence, I think a couple of good points from our colleagues, I, I, I think we should look, I, I always, I wondered when I looked at this, this morning, why the other fence wasn't put in, on the other properties. And, and I think that the hassle will be, if, if that does go residential or whatever is needed for fence, getting, that the ownership could change, and, and there could be a super hassle getting that fence completed. So I think that could be a requirement now, and the city could contact the other owners and, and get that fence in now, and it will probably be to your benefit too. But I think whenever you go back 10 years from now and try to get a fence put in, the other owners say, hey, we, we bought the place, you know, we have nothing to offend, that's your problem. So, so I, I think that we should, that should be addressed. Other than that, I, I think Jane did a fabulous job, and I, I just crossed off half my notes when, when Jane talked, so, so I'm, I'm done. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Just a couple of items to piggyback on that. I also am supportive of the fence going in with your initial application. It's very hard to do things in readers, and so I would prefer doing them now. There's, there's logic to the request. Generally supportive of the use, generally supportive of the, of the location. The placement, and I think Jane touched on this early, and it's been echoed throughout, we want to make sure that there is visibility to the, the business. However, I'm going to take this a little bit differently. I also don't necessarily want parking to be the highlight visually as you're navigating down the street. So if there is a way either to shift parking more toward the rear and bring the building forward, or even to provide burming around the parking and not around the building to kind of highlight the, the positive features rather than, you know, parking lots, they can be very, very well designed, they can be incredibly engineered, but frankly, they're not super pretty. And so what we're looking at and embracing and really encouraging that, that level of development that we've sought in the city of Dublin, that is, that is something that we are keen on seeing. Other people touched on primary materials versus secondary materials. We tend to be kind of sticklers on that. We want to see these buildings last longer than 20, 40 years. We want to see 100-year buildings, and so we have development standards that meet that level of quality. And then the last item is on, on the parking count itself. I also appreciate the reduction in parking, and I think it's a good balance between, you know, of course, we on the Planning and Zoning Commission are looking not just at this use, we're looking at future uses and the evolution of the city, and I think that that is a good balance. Jane, did you have another comment?
No, I just, I, I wanted, I, I think I've probably forgotten what I was going to say, but I, one that you should let me go last, because I, I don't want to, I don't want to be the one jumping out front all the time, but, but I do agree with you. I, I was very concerned when I saw Rebecca that, that what you were going to see first was the parking lot. And I, I think you're right on it. I think you, you have to look at a way that, that is, it's already set back from the road quite a bit, and I hate to think that your view to your building would be through cars and, and black asphalt, so. Yeah, and I, I just, the, the one thing that I was going to mention was, in looking at adjacent buildings, the detailing on the buildings is quite a bit more than maybe what you're displaying on this now. And if you decide to use more stone than brick, that wouldn't be a problem. It's just that I think that you have to really pay attention to the, the detailing and the articulation, recesses, forticoes, whatever it takes to get some articulation on the building, so.
Oh, one last, piggyback on that. We did, we did highlight significantly, and I don't think, I don't mean to beat a dead horse on that entryway. horse on that entryway feature and kind of highlighting that. But additionally, as a significant count of your patrons are going to be dropped off, having something that's covered from the weather as they're walking up, I do not claim to know your business anywhere near as much as you do, but that could accomplish two items. Obviously, it gives the protection and, you know, that walkway, but it also adds that articulation into the front of the building and then changes the massing on that one elevation. So just a call-out item there. I think you heard general welcome comments from the commission. We look at businesses like this and look at the services that are provided to the city as a whole, as just an understanding that businesses see Dublin is thriving and businesses see different needs in the city of Dublin. So we appreciate your time this evening. Did you have any questions from us? Did you hear what you needed to hear as far as direction goes on the application itself?
Yes, but I do have a question. I'm wondering if there is a point of confusion either on my part or on the committees. When you talk about the split rail fence, are you talking about that as it goes along the back toward the walk? Or are you talking about as you're doing the north and south? Because no development can go in to the west of the building, that's the park back there. And that path kind of circumnavigates the park. So you'd really just be cutting off access to that walkway from the participants. And I'm not sure, I think we've got a pretty good-sized back patio. Chris, you can talk a little bit about whatever the square footage is there. But I mean, the natural way we do things, we'll have some people on the back patio, and then we've got that big green space in the back where we could put tables or other things for them to use. A part of the concern with the split rail fence between the building and that park walkway is that you're kind of cutting down on that space and restricting that space for the developmentally disabled participants that we work with. If you're talking about the building development being to the north side off innovation, like between where the building will sit and where innovation is, there's a pretty strong tree line separating that spot now, which would be preserved if anything else, it would just, you know, overgrow with more trees and brush a little bit more in there. So I'm not really sure I understand the split rail comments.
So Nikki, do you have a drawing? You know, the only drawing that we have is the one with the parking lot and everything that doesn't really have those ancillary parcels and where the split rail fence would be on the drawing itself. Do you have anything to illustrate to the applicant where that would be and what it is that we're discussing?
Yeah, sure. Just give me one moment.
Thank you.
I'm hoping an aerial might work. So in terms of a split rail fence, it would be required to provide separation between these commercial uses within the Thomas Kohler Land Commerce District and potential surrounding residential uses, which you can see to the west here. This area is presently undeveloped. To the north, there would likely be development with commercial uses.
Right, but the area to the west is the park, right? So I don't think, unless the park were ever to get sold and, you know, you put in more housing back there, which I wouldn't anticipate, I wouldn't see that ever being developed as residential property.
I thought that was zoned low residential, low-density residential, that site to the west, where it says site.
It is. It's zoned as part of that neighborhood. You know, from a planning perspective, I would certainly say that nothing is forever. So while that, I think all of our hopes, knowing our values of the city of Dublin would be to preserve those trees long-term. But the requirement for a split rail fence is in the development text. So if there is not consensus amongst the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission to waiver on that item, then it would be required to be met with your final development plans.
Thank you, Nikki. And do we have any community plan or long-range land use on that particular area that could be brought forward with future application?
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the applicant at this time?
The only other comments that I'll make just for future reference are, you know, currently we are renting 2,000, 3,000 square foot buildings, probably half a mile away from this location. So when this site gets built, it's already going to be fairly heavily populated to the extent of about 80, 85%. And because of the interest we have in people that we cannot bring in right now because of the restriction in size of the current facilities, we expect this to fill to capacity pretty quickly. Now, this is not a case where if we outgrow the facilities, we would move on to larger facilities. The people that were in this facility would remain in this facility. We would look to build another facility in the Dublin area and expand in that fashion as opposed to saying, well, now we're too big for this building, gonna move out of here. So if that addresses those concerns. As far as the viewpoint from the street, if I could encourage all of you guys to drive by and take a look, you'll see that it is very difficult, even with the angle that we're putting the building at to the street right now, whether you bring that thing forward or not, you only get a couple of seconds when you're passing by on Emerald where you really even see that property because it's primarily the credit union and then the child daycare center. And so it's almost just kind of like squeezed out back there, which again, isn't a problem from our perspective because we're not looking for a lot of, you know, off the street or off the sidewalk kind of, you know, walk-up traffic to the building. I mean, our business is collected and done in another way through the Department of Developmental Disabilities. We just want actually a place a little bit further set back so that, you know, the participants are kind of, it's more of a health and safety thing in terms of how we get them. We don't want something like right on the street. I know it wouldn't be. All I'm saying is I think if you move that building forward, if you actually drove by from Emerald, I think you'd be surprised, no matter, even if you put it right on the corner, you're not gonna really see it too much, except for a couple of seconds as you're going like northbound on Emerald and you take a look to your left just at the right time.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Cook. Ms. Fox, did you have a comment?
Mr. Cook, you know, I agree with you. You're right. It is very awkward. But one of the things you might be able to take advantage of, even though it is off of an access, is in improving the front edge, giving some articulation of portico and possibly landscaping some in the middle where you took out those parking spaces, just might give a better, a better front door aesthetic than just dazing over a large partial of asphalt. So I think that's what we're looking for.
Okay. And we would intend to do that with that middle island area, Ms. Fox, with terms of like the, you know, landscaping that nicely, putting in some nice trees, kind of calling that out a little bit.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Thank you, Mr. Jolly, for joining this evening. And we certainly look forward to seeing you again real soon.
Okay. Thank you so much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, Nikki, did we have the applicant for the Dublin Plaza?
I have not had a chance to speak with him.
I'm here. You hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right. Sorry about that. Is it, can you hear me still?
Yes.
Yes, but there's an indication on my screen that your connection is not very strong.
Okay.
We can still hear. Yeah, I would recommend you keep your.
Let me take my video down and I'll talk. How's that? Can I do that?
Yes, thank you.
So to answer the questions, yes, the paint, we will take care of that. I'm sure we'll have to wait till a little bit the temperatures warm up before we can do that. The sign on the pork corrals, that's not a problem either. I'm assuming that's Kroger had, is that what you saw is the signage with some Kroger stuff on there?
Right. It's mainly the Kroger cart corrals where they have some vinyl or plastic, yeah, signage on every one of them.
Okay, okay. We'll talk to Kroger about getting those removed. The lights, I don't have a problem. I've got to talk to our property management about how they're doing. I'm sure what they're doing is they're phasing in LEDs as the incandescent lights are phasing out. But maybe we can figure out a way to hasten that bit so that we can get a little bit more uniform light out there. I don't have a problem with trying to do that. I just don't know what the scale is right now and what we have out there. So certainly, we want that to look better and we understand the need to improve that.
You know, my suggestion would be, and I live in the area, so I'm at the shopping center all the time. And what I'm seeing is that the color of lights are all over the place. I mean, not all warm, and they're not all bright. I mean, the preference would be to have a nice warm light because the goosenecks are that kind of a fixture that sort of looks towards a warmer light. So my suggestion would be a warmer light. It can be an LED, just on the warm side. And then just as your property people take care of replacing lights, just to make sure that they are all in that same color you. Otherwise, it gets very distracting and a little bit, you know, not comprehensively planned, I guess. It just doesn't do well for the entire.
I'm a lighting guy, so I understand that.
Okay.
But I, in my house, I like my light to be consistent and look. And so I get what you're saying there. So I don't have a problem talking to them. And I could report back to Nikki with some stuff as to how we're going to take care of those.
That is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, Mr. Supalack?
Hey, Charlie, different line of questioning. You don't necessarily have to respond to this at all as much as maybe it's an advocacy generally, and I hope I'm speaking on behalf of everyone on this commission, that that complex, that entire complex is, right, vibrant with Dublin life. Lots of, lots of activity in there. Obviously, it's got an anchor in a Kroger store, it's got an anchor in the hardware store. All of us have been there. If we don't frequent that side of, that side of things, I'm just gonna generally advocate, when does it get scheduled for a pretty substantial facelift? Because I think it could be, right, even just reskinning and repaving and a sort of overhaul of it. That could be a heart of Dublin kind of center, and we would definitely advocate for it.
You know, we could certainly talk about that. Believe it or not, there was a facelift done, I don't know the exact years, you might have a better idea, but I think it was around 10 years ago. And some of the challenges are that the ability to bring it up to what I think we all would agree is kind of a Dublin standard, there is an economic model that's working. So we have tenants that have certain rights that we have to maintain. And we can't just tell them we're gonna do X, Y, or Z to it. So in every one of our centers that we've tried to renovate, we do it throughout our portfolio, and we try to update them, bring them up to speed. We're doing it across our portfolio, although this year's, you know, a little different year. We agree that we want our center to have a certain feel, but there's also some challenges we have within, and we can revisit it. But I don't think it's gonna happen anytime real soon, but I'll certainly talk to the owners about it. And maybe we can have a further discussion. I will say that I've had discussions with your staff over time about the center repeatedly.
I'm sure. And here's the thing, we, I, all of the hardship and the dance that you have to do, we understand all the more reason if this is an opportunity, you're here with us. We very much appreciate you, very much appreciate that center. If we can, you know, reseed and put our flag in the ground and advocate for it, that's all we need to do. And you continue taking from there.
Well, I appreciate the words and we will. And like I said, we'll continue to work with your staff on that.
And I'll piggyback one other item on that. Your plaza, because of its general location, sees quite a few, obviously not this year, but, or last year rather, sees quite a bit of Dublin traffic outside of the normal, I'm patronizing a business, traffic, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, you know, those types of things. And so just a general thank you for being a great partner to the city of Dublin and having tenants in an area and yourself just embrace kind of that Dublin life. And so thanks for being a great partner.
Well, thank you. We really appreciate it. You're welcome. We like being in Dublin.
Well, thank you. Nikki?
So I have received one public comment, if you don't mind me reading that into the record.
Please do.
So this is from Kevin O'Connor at 48 Corvins Mill Drive, Dublin, Ohio, 43017. And this is in regards to the Kroger Plaza on Westbridge Street. "I'm an adjacent property owner. When is this property going to address the trash that is generated by this property, which consistently flows into mine and other adjacent property owners? The goal of planning and zoning is good neighbors, is good neighbors. This property is not living up to this. I am happy to provide photos if you need them."
Thank you, Nikki. Could you supply contact information to Charlie for this particular neighbor?
Certainly.
That would be great. I'll have our property management reach out to them.
Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion on this item for Dublin Plaza? I am looking for a motion. Remember, we are discussing the master sign plan.
Motion to approve the master sign plan for case 20178MSP.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy and Mr. Supalack. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy? Mr. Brimes?
Yes.
Ms. Call?
Yes.
Mr. Fishman?
Yes.
Mr. Supalack?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. And Charlie, again, thank you for joining us this evening. Thank you for your patience as we work through some technical difficulties. And thank you for reaching out to the neighbors who contacted us through the public comment. That is much appreciated.
Thanks, Lord, for appreciating. Appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you. All right. It looks like we are moving on to, what's this, case number nine, IX? Jumping around a little bit, but this cases four and six will be heard together, and this is for Heartland Bank, 6500 Prince Road, Final Development Plan and Master Sign Plan, cases 20-207 FDP and 20-208MSP. These applications are requested for review and approval of exterior modifications and associated site improvements, along with a master sign plan for an existing bank on Bridge Street District Commercial. The 0.8 acre site is southeast of the intersection of Westbridge Street and France Road. And it looks like Chase is going to be giving our presentation this evening.
All right. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Great. So as was mentioned, this is a request for review and approval of a final development plan and associated master sign plan for an existing bank located in the street district. This is the third step of a three-step process. So as you likely recall, this came before you all on July 9th and October 15th for preliminary development plan. The site is highlighted in yellow here. As was mentioned, it sits at the southeast corner of US 33 State Route 161 and France Road. It is approximately 0.8 acre in size and serves as an out parcel to the Dublin Plaza Shopping Center. So I'll briefly go through the history. Again, this came before you all on July 9th as a concept plan and on October 15th as a preliminary development plan. You'll likely recall that at the preliminary development plan stage, three waivers were approved. So these address materials, transparency, and a parapet height. There were also four conditions of approval with the preliminary development plan. So these address final engineering concerns. So these address final engineering concerns, parking concerns, transparency calculation errors, just minor calculation errors, and exterior cladding material concerns. As you like to recall, the commission was generally not opposed to the proposed cladding material, but was in agreeance with staff's recommended condition of approval that the applicant continue to research and look into cladding materials to ensure that the most appropriate one was used. These are just some photos showing the existing conditions of the site. You've seen these before, but on the left is the south elevation and on the right is the drive-through, which is situated on the north side of the bank building. On the left here, you've got the south and east elevation. So the east elevation faces the McDonald's next door. And then on the right, you've got the south and west elevation facing France Road. So what you see here are the existing and proposed site plans. So existing is on the left, proposed on the right. The site is largely, proposed to largely remain as it is today. However, there are a few changes proposed. Those are actually highlighted in the boxes you see on the site plans. In the red box on the left-hand side is the existing four-sided pylon sign at the northwest corner of the site. So that is to propose to be removed, which I'll get to a little bit later in the presentation. And it's proposed to be replaced with a monument ground sign. The blue on the left is just highlighting the existing parking on the north side of the site, which is to be removed, as you can see on the right-hand site plan here. And finally, the green box on the left indicates where the existing dumpster and dumpster enclosure are. On the right, you can see that that is removed. And then the orange is just highlighting the outline of the existing building. So this is the proposed landscape plan. It is largely unchanged from the preliminary development plan stage. As you can see, there is a significant increase in landscaping in the northwest and southwest portions of the site. The applicant is also proposing a bricklayer patio in the main entryway area with stone seat walls and benches, as well as increased landscaping. Then finally, on the east side of the site, the applicant is proposing to increase landscaping around the utility structure at the rear of the building. So what you see here are the north and south elevations. Again, these are largely unchanged from the preliminary development plan stage. Kind of at the top, the vertical slats, you can see that is the pre-finished metal material being proposed by the applicant. The kind of diagonal lines are the, indicate the Trespa material that's being proposed by the applicant. And then the darker areas are the existing brick. And then same thing here, really with the east and west elevation. So the applicant did continue to work with staff as required by the condition of approval of the preliminary development plan to research the proposed material and research other materials to ensure that the most appropriate material was selected for this project. What the applicant is proposing to utilize is a Trespa high-pressure laminate material in a Milano Sabia and elegant oak finish. This material is not an approved primary or secondary material in code. So it does require approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. However, code does allow the PCC to approve high-quality synthetic materials pending, you know, durability information, information on insulation from the applicant. And this is an updated rendering provided by the applicant. You may recall there was a darker wood option or Trespa option utilized last time. So there are two lighter material or finishes proposed this time around. Other than that, like I said, the elevations remain largely unchanged. And then we're jumping to the master sign plan now. So this is just some master sign plan intent and purpose. As you likely recall, master sign plan is intended to allow a greater degree of flexibility in sign design and display. It is intended for multiple signs for a single building or a group of buildings to ensure the requested signs work in a coordinated fashion. And it is not intended to simply permit larger or more visible signs. Because this building was constructed in the eighties, obviously before the implementation of the Bridge District Code, this site defaults to standard code sign regulations, which I'll get into shortly here. So this is the proposed ground sign. The applicant is proposing the sign at approximately 32 and a half square feet. It is constructed of a routed H2U material painted white. And it's proposed to be illuminated, halo illuminated using white LEDs. The sign is proposed to be mounted to a stone monument, which is clad in a Connecticut white line granite stone. For per code, the site is permitted either to ground or to wall signs. So ground signs are limited to 50 square feet in size and 15 feet in height. Wall signs are limited to one square foot in size per linear foot of the elevation to which it's attached, up to 80 square feet. And those are permitted to be up to 15 feet in height. So getting into the proposed wall signs, this is proposed for the north elevation. It is proposed at 18 feet in height. So like I said, code permits an installation of up to 15 feet in height. It is 41 and a half square feet in size, whereas for this elevation, code would permit up to 54 and a half square feet. And it is a channel letter sign constructed of an H2U material, again, painted white. And then this sign is on the west elevation. So this sign is 15 feet in height, meets the code requirement. It is 74.4 square feet in size. Whereas for this elevation, code would permit a sign of 80 square feet in size. And again, the sign is a channel letter sign constructed of an H2U material and painted white. Finally, as was mentioned at the preliminary development plan stage, the applicant is requiring, or requesting a total of 21 parking spaces for the site. Per code, a minimum of 12 parking spaces are required and a maximum of 15 are permitted based on the use. So approval of a parking plan is necessary. This final development plan was reviewed against the applicable criteria as well as the master sign plan. And staff is recommending approval of the parking plan with no conditions, approval of the final development plan with no conditions, and approval of a master sign plan with three conditions as outlined here. So I'm happy to answer any questions you all may have, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight. Thank you.
From the applicant is here.
Hello, I am here. My name is Jennifer Bender. I'm with Daylight Sign Company.
I'm sorry, it's really hard to hear you.
Oh. Not sure what to do about it. Can you hear me now?
A little bit. If you use a little bit louder voice, then I think we'll be good. I don't think we need to change settings or anything.
Okay.
Did you have a presentation or want to make a statement before we start with questions?
Jennifer, if I may, hi, I'm Ashley Chow. I'm with the bank. And in the room with me is Rex from Moody's Holland. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, Ashley.
Thank you. If I can just make a couple of comments and then I can address any questions. Just reading through the plan and the staff comments on the Trespa. I just want to make sure that you all know that we did work with the city staff quite extensively. We studied a lot of different materials and how it was going to be installed. And consistent with what we had presented the last time, in order to get the most natural wood-looking application that we're proposing, we have to go with a material that we can turn into a plank, just like a natural wood would be. And Trespa was the only material that we were able to find that was going to be durable and looked the way that we needed it to look. But we did consider many other options. So I just wanted to make sure that you are aware that we heard you there and that we studied that extensively. And I think Rex provided the staff with a lot of information on the durability of that product. I also want to make a comment really quickly on the rendering that was in the final development plan, the first one. It included signage, which was from the very first conceptual plan. So when you're looking at that view, I don't want you to misinterpret the size of that signage as to what it actually was. But I don't have anything additional to necessarily present. I think Chase has done a great job. I'll just add, you know, a couple of comments. I want to thank the planning staff and the commission for the feedback throughout this process. You know, although we started this two or three years ago and formally with the city, we decided to pick right at the beginning of the pandemic to start it formally. And going into the virtual environment, it was a little bit different and challenging. And I will say that the city of Dublin did a really nice job handling that. I've been through a lot of virtual meetings since then, and I think this one has run really well. I hope that through the progression of the plans from conceptual all the way to final, you can see that we've heard your comments and we've taken those into consideration, not only in the development plan, but as well as in the signage plan. And we know that the signage is important to you all. So we did take a look at other master sign plan applicants, those that have been approved, to make sure that we weren't asking for anything that was unreasonable or inconsistent with the intent of the master sign plan. And so, you know, I think I want to, the one thing that I noticed there is many of the applicants are going for four signs and a mixture of three different types. We're going from a four-sided pylon sign here down to, you know, three, three different signs. And we feel that, you know, it's consistent with what our business needs are, but also allows us to do the exterior renovations that we're really looking to do in that space. The last thing that I just wanted to mention here is that about 10 years ago, we started having some major issues. This building was built in the sixties. We started occupying it in 1996. And for the last decade, we've been dealing with, you know, antiquated, mechanical, electrical, specifically HVAC. And about two years ago, that's what really prompted the need to look at this building and say, what are we going to do? We've got to get the heat working. We've got to make it inhabitable for our staff and for our customers. And so that's when we really started down the path of what are we going to do with this space? What's going to make the most sense? And we had two alternatives that we looked at and that we worked with the city on. One was just that interior renovation, get all the mechanicals up to speed, do what we need to do on the interior. We would maintain the exterior, but not do too much because, as you know, at the time, and still to some extent, the surrounding buildings are not making significant changes to their exterior. And so it was, it was a little bit of a decision for us. But ultimately, the city and us as well wanted to make the change to bring that building up to a standard that really looked very nice for that gateway and spent the last two years to get us to this point. In recent months though, we have been, you know, looking at what are we going to do when we operate? And what are we going to do with these impending mechanical issues? We have already vacated the space. We're currently operating out of a temporary location in Bridge Park. From a banking perspective, it's pretty challenging because we don't have a drive-through. We don't have the amenities that we need to operate. So we've kind of displaced our customers and our associates. And our goal now is to be able to make a decision that will get this project started as soon as we can so that we can get the renovations that we need to get moved back in. And so, you know, my ask here is I hope that they see what we have done with the plan. We hope that you like it as much as we do. And we appreciate the feedback along the way. And we're really excited to get this project underway. If you have any questions related to the sign itself, I've got Jennifer Bender from Daylight here to answer in specifics, or Rex from Moody's Holland, if it's anything on the building or the site.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
All right. To the commission, Christina, why don't you start us off?
Thank you, Ms. Call.
And we'll do questions and comments simultaneously.
Oh, okay. Sounds good. I have a question. Thank you. I have a question for Mr. Ridge. I mean, the obvious question probably in everyone's mind is can you give us a bit more feedback from staff's perspective on the pushback on the material? Is it, is it a durability thing? Is it a cost thing? Is it because they want to ensure this would-like appearance? Can you give us a bit more from, from staff perspective?
Yeah, I think really at the preliminary development plan stage, we just didn't have as much information as maybe we would have liked to feel confident at the time. It is a material that is typically used in a different fashion. You don't typically see it in the wood aesthetic. But it, after, you know, further research, it was determined that it is a durable material. The color lasts, has a longer span than some of the similar materials such as like Niche Ha. So I guess, you know, to answer your question, at the preliminary development plan stage, we really just needed more information to feel confident.
And then do you feel, Mr. Ridge, that the, that the applicant was able to provide this level of detail that, that was requested from a durability and color perspective, I guess is what you're saying?
Yeah, I believe so. And in your packets, the applicant did provide, I guess, a chart of durability, kind of color, lifespan information as well in comparison with other similar materials. And I think you also should have all received a sample of the Trespa as well. So I think, I think we did get, yeah. Adequate information, yes.
Thank you. Appreciate the response.
Ms. Fox, do you want to go next?
Yeah, I have the same, I guess I want to follow up question with you, Chase. The Bridge Street, well, yes, the Bridge Street area calls for a primary material. So what other primary materials in wood did you get a chance to look at? I mean, this is a synthetic material. We had asked at the preliminary to find, at least I know that I did, find something that looked more wood-like, more realistic, less synthetic. So what other options did you have to look at?
So just an experience with Niche Ha, that was one that staff and the applicant researched further. I'd have to defer to Rex if you have more information on the specifics on the other material. I apologize. I'm not remembering exactly what those were off the top of my head.
Yes, there's a number, I mean, there's a number of materials that have a wood look. We felt after looking at many of them that this one, this one was the closest to the look that we were, that we were after. And Niche Ha, for instance, I mean, it is certainly appropriate for some uses, but it's actually a less expensive material. It's not as durable a material. It's essentially a fiber board with an applied finish. This material, the finish in this is baked on. They have, the company can, can give specific examples of how, how this material lasts in terms of the finish. They have a, they point to one where, where this material was put on 20 years ago, 20 plus years ago. And one of the sections got damaged and they had to replace it. They put a replacement, the exact same color, and held it up against the material that had been there for 20 years. And nobody could tell the difference. They have examples like that. And I think I've given, I think I submitted some, they have a brochure that has a whole lot of information in it about, about the durability of the product. But we, we think it's. But we, we think it's, we think it's a higher-end product. It's, it's more expensive than, than a lot of the other materials that are available.
We also looked at a cementation tile and discussed the, the concept of using natural wood. And it's just not a, a long-term, you know, from a maintenance and how it will look and feel. If the desire is to maintain, and what we heard is that we wanted to maintain that natural, that wood, that warmth. If we want to maintain that look, using natural wood wasn't really going to be an option for us. And following that preliminary meeting, we did have a conversation with staff and I said, you know, I asked, I said, well, do we need to abandon it? Do we need to go to the Nishihara? And we did renderings in, in those materials, and they start to look very cold and very stone-like. And it really didn't give, we lost all the warmth. And so, you know, I proposed to staff, I said, well, do I have to look at like scrapping the whole thing? And they're like, no, 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 we really like the, the look and the warmth of it. We just need to be convinced that this is the right material. And I feel like we've gone through the motions and worked with the vendor extensively to make sure that we're going to achieve the look and feel that we want without having the, the risk of, you know, in the maintenance of natural wood.
You know, I think we're all going through the same thing, is this warmth. My concern is that, you know, we've, that it's a synthetic material that hasn't been used in the area. It is, it has to complement surrounding structures, which we require a primary material. I understand that we were willing to look at options. In Bridge Park, we've used, or we've allowed to be used, a wood-like material, and I'm not sure, I think staff was looking into it, that has the depth and the character of real wood. It's very difficult in looking at this that it's going to give a real wood look. And I, and I tried to do some, looked at gallery pictures. It's, it's a more modern material, there's no doubt about it. It's going to give a different look. It's not going to give that primary material look that we're looking for. I just, I worry that it's not going to give that warmth. And I do know that there are other synthetic materials out there that have more depth, but I'm not an architect and I haven't had the opportunity to look at others, and that's why I asked, because we had said we weren't particular, some of us weren't particularly favorable for Trespa because of the look. I don't doubt the durability at all, at all. I'm just not sure that it is meeting the, the intent of the code in the way a primary material would do. So I'm interested to hear what the other commission members say.
All right. Mr. Grimes, do you want to go next?
When I look at the layout from the, the Day-Night sign, showing that how that's material is going to play out, it's, it's going to have a, it's not that largest percentage of what you're going to see when you look at the building. It seems to be tapering off and, and almost to the point of an accent because of all the glass that's down below there. So I don't know that it's going, you know, that, it, it looks fine to my eye if the rendering, the picture in the signage is appropriately sized. And there's probably going to be more landscaping around there that'll, that'll blend in there. So, and when you, as mentioned previously, in the Dublin Plaza, I mean, the color is not that far off in the distance to the Plaza or the McDonald's next door. So I, I think I'm, I'm fine with this. It looks very durable, looks really strong. I, I like it. I like the overall plan that they've submitted. I think they are pretty faithful to what we discussed last time. And yes, it's going to be a very high visible intersection and asset, I think, to the bank. So, and Dublin. So I, I like the plan. I'm satisfied with the siding. That's where I am.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. We haven't addressed, so I want to rewind back to Christina and go to Jane again. We haven't addressed the signage, so we are looking at both items. And so if we want to rewind and discuss that quickly, and then we'll proceed on. Ms. Kennedy?
Yeah. I, I would not be in favor of the sign that is, I think it was the 18, 18-foot sign where the requirement is 15. I'd like to get the signs back into requirement if possible. I was just driving with my kids today down Sawmill, and I said, hey, for the lesson for the City of Dublin, if you look at one side of Sawmill, that's Dublin, the other side is Columbus. And they were like, oh my gosh, it looks so different. I know Warren taught me that many years ago. Dublin looks different for a reason because we follow a code that is pretty strict in comparison. And so I'd like to see the signs come back into, into code. That would be my, my stance on the signage.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Fox?
I would normally agree with you, Christina, but my concern about this is that if you don't, if you put it at 15, at least on the elevation, it looks like the one, I'm trying to see what, whether that's west or east or whatever. I'm afraid it would not centered. I worry that it would be dropped down to a point that it would look awkward in that I'm trying to think which, which one this is, but I think it's the one where that, where the plant boxes are. That, that's one. One is 17, one is 18. I'm afraid that if you drop it down, you're just going to have it sitting right on the edge. That's my concern.
I appreciate the applicant was kind enough to provide us one that was at that 15 mark and it would hang over, it would be mounted to nothing, it would be mounted to air on the bottom edge of the hardwood.
That's what I worry about.
Yeah. For the clarification, ladies, I'm, I'm on, I'm in agreement with Jane and what Rebecca just said. I appreciate that call out. I missed, I missed that image, so thank you.
Right. I do have a question once again for staff on the, and I do like the curved ground sign, but I, I feel like it's, tell me again, Nikki, the sizing on that and what's allowed?
Yep. We're, um...
I'm sorry, Chase. I'm sorry, Chase. I'm looking at, I'm looking at Nikki's picture and I, I wasn't looking at you.
Fine.
So could you, could you clarify that for me, Chase? I'm sorry.
You're okay. So since this does default to standard code for sign regulations, ground signs are permitted to be a maximum of 15 square feet in size and 15 feet in height. They also are required to be set back eight feet from right-of-way or property line. So it is within those requirements?
It's within it, okay. And, all right, well, it's within it. I, I would have liked to see that shrunk just a little bit, if we're going to allow for some variances on wall signs. Is the wall sign on the large triangle, is, tell, tell, tell me about that one with the, no, I'm not seeing it here, with the carriage. I don't think I have it at scale. Is it at scale? On the, on the Franz Road frontage, that's what I'm talking about?
Yeah, the west elevation. Per code, wall signs are allowed to be, are permitted to be one square foot in size per linear foot of the elevation to which they're attached, but that's limited to 80 square feet. So in this case, they are permitted to sign, a wall sign on that elevation of 80 square feet.
And they're within that, aren't they?
They are, and they're also meeting the height requirement of 15.
Right. I don't, I don't have a problem with those. I do not have a problem with them. So I'm okay with that.
So then just for the...
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Grimes?
Oh, sorry. Catch up then. But then just for the record, I do want to say that I am in favor of the sign package. Just, I know I was roundabout in my words earlier, so just to clarify for the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you, Ms. Fox, also. Mr. Grimes?
As, as before, I, I like the project. I like the siding. I, I'm fine with the plan. I think it's a good plan for that location.
Specifically on the signs, no comments there?
No, I think that they answered, the questions were all answered about height and so forth in proportionality. I think it's, it's a fine plan for the, for that, that design.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Mr. Supalak?
I'm good. How about this? This is a lovely project. Thank you all for, for working on it. It really is, is lovely. We'll be really satisfied, I think, when it's done. I, I don't have any trouble, the signs are kind of in the right place. I, I don't think we have to force the hand, right? The design knows what it wants to be. I don't think we have to force the hand with the rules here. I, I'm going to continue to echo what's being said. Forgive me, I lost my samples. How about this? The wood siding, I think we all agree, everybody, everybody on this call agrees, is going to be a good-looking building. The danger, the risk is, boy, is this not the product, right? And Trespa is a great product. It's a great exterior cladding product. Whoever's putting it, installing it will install it great. It'll be a great, wonderful range screen. But I, too, have hesitation here with it. I guess I'm, I'm just, I'm just concerned, right, about it in a variety of ways. We don't get this one back once it goes up, right? You guys don't get it back, we don't get it back. So how do we, how do we get there? And I know, I've been sitting this entire time sort of Googling exterior wood products and just looking at their finished imagery of the projects. And some of them are really flat, right? Some of them are, you can clearly tell it's a modern product, right? Some of that has to do with the way it's edged, the way it's seamed, the, what it's adjacent to. There's lots of Trespa that is used with Trespa, like solid charcoal gray panels, and then they actually use a natural wood next to it on Trespa's site. So that leads me to believe that even in their, in their portfolio of projects, they're sort of recognizing they're, they're falling a little bit short on how convincing and how compelling this, this skinning is. I don't, I don't necessarily know how to remedy that at this point. I, I think we all are hesitant with it. I, I'm looking at, you know, one of the more compelling ones, ProDema, looks a little more realistic. I, I wonder if there's a point at which you're going to engage, and I don't know how this, this works with our total process, Jenny and, Jenny and Nicole, or even Thad, there's going to be an engaged ace, somebody who is going to be installer of this panel, right? There's going to be a finisher on that. I wonder, could we build into all this, the need to see a mock-up? Is that something we can do here? So we see it seamed, we see it at scale, not just the, you know, I mean, a three-by-three inch piece, but something that we can all believe in and, and, and head nod to at a certain point. And maybe that means it's not just Trespa. I'm not convinced Trespa's wrong, but maybe that means that is it Trespa, ProDema, right? You know, another, another of the ilk that are some of the more compelling. I, I don't know how that, how that works into your, this total process. The, even if we're convinced it's a synthetic wood of some sort, they could get the building permit. This is one of the last steps in the, you know, I mean, to the, to the shell. So it, there is potentially time. I just don't know what it means with relative to our potential approval and/or conditions we build in.
Yeah, so certainly the Planning and Zoning Commission asked for full-size samples before, and we have had applicants provide those in the past. So not speaking for the applicant, but they could certainly elect to do that. Additionally, we have also applied conditions of approval in the past that require that a portion of a project come before the Planning and Zoning Commission for a second time, you know, prior to, say, issuance of occupancy or prior to issuance of a final building permit for the exterior, something along those lines. So I think there are opportunities. Thad, do you have anything else to add there?
I, I don't. I think that if, if the commission, well, I say I don't, and then I started on saying something else. The only thing I would add is that if the commission wants to pursue that as a second condition, and if the applicant is agreeable to that, that we make sure in our condition it's very clear, you know, what size we're looking for. Because I don't want either, I, I don't think anyone wants either party to be disappointed at the end of the day, either by having to, you know, reconsider the cladding after they've installed some large amount, or the commission not feeling like there was enough to get a sense of the, the scale of it. So that's it.
You know, I, I have to, I have to ask this because we have not seen anything else. And we didn't, you know, that's what we required in the preliminary, was the options. And, and I, like Mark, have seen a variety of other wood cladding materials on other buildings that have a much more realistic wood appearance. And I wouldn't push on this so hard except for the fact that the intent here is that the cladding should be primarily a primary material. And we're going so far off that, and we're not sure of the product itself. So to me, the waivers that we've granted, away from what is within the code anyway, and not having any options to look at, I would almost request that, you know, we, we actually have an independent architect provide us with some other kinds of sample options that we might be able to consider. I hate to be a sticker on this, but I, I, like Mark, once this is up and we allow a synthetic material that we've never used or seen before on a gateway corner, when the code specifically states a primary material, I don't know how you walk yourself back from that, from that precedent we set.
Right.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. Mr. Supalak, let's go back to you.
Forgive me, Rex and I, the woman sitting with Rex, forgive me, I didn't...
Ashley.
I didn't catch your name, and now it's not on the, not on the name cards. Ashley. I'm actually, I actually wonder, so don't get me wrong, again, we all want this, we know what the intent is, we're just worried we're not going to get to the intent, and then all of a sudden it's going to be done, and we're going to be all, everyone on this is going to be disappointed. I'm, I'm, maybe I'm floating with you. I've actually, there's one example I keep coming back to and, and as I continue to search, and I don't know that it is necessarily, what I'm going to get to is, I don't know that it's necessarily the material as much as it might, might be the detailing, right, with this material. And, and food for thought, right? There's, there's, a range screen is a range screen. It doesn't fundamentally change the sort of documents you've already prepared and/or might continue to prepare, it just fundamentally changes how the, how the installer applies it. So I'm going to, I'm going to sort of float one with you and, and at least seed it with you. And maybe it's, maybe it's less about which material, maybe it's more about the, the detailing. I'm going to something and, and write this down, or anybody Google this if you want, Parker Community Boathouse. And there is, there is a portion of it, Parker Community Boathouse. And if you just go to Google images, you'll, you'll find it. Again, this is a ProDema product. I'm not advocating for ProDema. But there's a portion of it that is horizontal siding. And what they've done is, it's a little more, it's got a Herzog-Demirian kind of quality to the design, and Rex, Rex knows that name, I'm sure, but, but it, the, the skin wanders a little bit. So the detailing might be canted and not, might, might not be all sort of coplanar on the skinning. It might be canted a little bit, and the bottom edge is sort of adjusted, but it starts to have, it starts to give this synthetic material a more compelling quality, and I think gets us to where, potentially where we want to go. I'm not advocating, but it's demonstrating that that, that possibility, it might be in the detailing around this material as much as the material itself.
Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Let's move on to Mr. Schneer. Thank you, Mr. Supalak. Let's move on to Mr. Schneer.
I had a question, maybe for Mark or for staff or anyone who knows. Is hardy board permitted in the Bridge Street district? I didn't do the, didn't look it up while the other people were talking. Does anybody know offhand?
Chase, can you field that?
I do not know off the top of my head. I think hardy board is a cementous fiber board.
Correct. That would be a secondary material. Primary materials are brick and stone and glass.
Right. Well, I thought, I don't know, I don't know the answer to it, not, and that's why I ask. And my point is that it's not necessarily whether it's synthetic or not, but it's the look that we're, you know, that we're after, I would think. So I think I'm echoing some others. I don't have a problem because, you know, the trade-off, we've all seen in Dublin and elsewhere bad wood that's not maintained properly. So I just not get, I'm not hung up on whether it's all natural versus synthetic. It's the look of it. And, you know, out here in Mirfield, there's some really bad cedar that is quite natural and just hasn't, doesn't stand the test of time. So I, you know, if they were taking a straw vote, I probably wanted to see what my fellow commissioners would do. I'm fine with it as proposed. But if the, if the will of the commission is that there be some mock-up, I could support that as well.
Any comment on the signs, Mr. Schneer?
No, I'm fine with the signage. Actually, I think it looks great.
Thank you, Mr. Schneer. Mr. Fisher?
Okay, I'll just say this. I wouldn't get the support, but I'm always happier when the signs are in code. Okay, so I'll say about the signs, okay? But it sounds like everybody loves it, so I'm happy. I'm a little bit concerned, enough concerned that I drove around today about 4:30 about the material, only because when you look at the drawings, this material touches the ground, okay? It's all the way down on the corners, if you notice, okay? And as I drove around, when primary materials are not on the ground, they tend to crack, and they tend to rot, and they tend to get dirty and so on. And so that's my concern. Also, this material, maybe I'm not smart enough to read the chart, but on the back of the material, it says that the samples are not representative of the size, thickness, or the edge doesn't matter, but thickness of the material. Is the material thicker than this, or is it thinner than this? And if it's thinner than this, it could crack. And as I said, it goes all the way to the ground, so guy with a snowplow or whatever. Also, when I drove around today, and you're right about cedar, my house has a lot of cedar on it, but it doesn't touch the ground anywhere. So it's not rotten. It still looks pretty good after 40 years. But when you go around and look at cedar that does, it looks bad. And that's my concern with this material. I think they've done, it's a great design. I think they've made an effort. I compliment them. But I have a concern, and I'd like to know, maybe they know, the architects know, if it's thinner than this, or is it thicker than this? And also, who knows how to, I didn't know quite how to read this chart. Are they talking about the Tressla in this chart when they say color change fading due to weathering defined as exposure sunlight, extreme weather will cause colored surfaces to gradually fade, chalk, or accumulate dirt and stains? Is that, are they talking about Tressla? Are they talking about this material?
He tells a picture on, just so we can follow along.
Okay, it says on where they have the comparisons and the Tressla, it looks like they're talking about the Tressla, but maybe I'm not reading the chart correctly. But if it is, it says color change or fading due to weathering.
If you look at the top, if you look at the header on that chart, that is in relation to the fiber cement comparison?
What I was trying to figure out, okay, but then the Tressla doesn't have any comments.
Oh, so the color fastness, it's the plus four to five on a five-part gray scale, so that results greater than four, is it true? And so I believe the applicant spoke earlier to the, you know, they compared after 20 years and have the color fastness. That's just what I think in this particular.
But what I'm concerned, color fantasy, but I'm concerned about durability and cracking and how thick is this stuff? And what's it going to look like in 10 years? And as I said, as I drove around today, and I saw synthetic materials touching the ground, and it was amazing how many are cracked and as they touch the ground, I think from snowplows, who knows what it is. So, and I'm really for putting primary materials, following the code, that we use primary materials, especially where it can be touched by a human being, you know? In Bridge Street, we have materials up high, three stories up, and they're not touched, but the primary materials are on, we try to get them on the ground. So that's finally, can they answer that question? Is it thinner than this or thicker than this?
There you go. You're on mute. There you go.
Yeah, no, this is, those samples are just for color. The actual material is between 5/16ths and 3/8ths, eight of an inch thick. And as far as it coming down to the ground, in a couple of places, it comes down to the ground easily, but it will not be touching the ground. It will be held away from the pavement, pavement. So no, we do not think, we don't think there's any issue with it cracking at that point. And again, their durability information, I think, addresses that as well.
How high is it off the ground? Is it an inch or foot?
Probably, well, I would say half an inch to an inch, but it touches, where it touches, and it doesn't touch the ground. It comes right down to whether it's pavement.
Well, if it's, yeah, if it's an inch, some of the buildings I looked at today were an inch or even more. But it looked like if the snow piled against it and it, you know, it got shoved by a snowplow or whatever, they were cracked and, you know, and damaged. And the buildings with primary materials, that wasn't the case, so.
We don't believe that snow itself would affect this. It's a question, I could get a definitive answer on that. But, you know, in terms of plows, I mean, that's a management thing, and in any building, even with primary materials, you don't want plows running into the walls. And in this case, I don't think there would be, the way it's set up right now with curbs, I don't think, I don't think plows would be right up against this building. But I would say that, but I mean, that's forgotten anyhow in that today.
Yeah. So do we decide, you say it is thicker than this then? Is that what you're telling?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. Any other discussion or comments before I deliver some comments? Ms. Fox?
Just quickly, I want to be sure that we're clear. Wood is considered a secondary material. It's not considered a primary. So for at least my part, I'm not opposed to a secondary material being the main. But I think most importantly, this has to have a realistic wood look. If we're going to allow something that is synthetic and we have not used it, it has to have the look that we're, it has to have the warmth of wood, and it has to appear to be wood. Otherwise, it's going to, it's going to stand out quite differently at that corner from anything else. So I just wanted to be sure people know that wood was considered a secondary material.
Thank you, Ms. Fox. So Ashley and Rex, looking to you for a question. I imagine that you can understand where the commission is going, you know, we're nervous. We're looking at this material, a material we haven't seen before. We're looking at, you know, three-by-three, four-by-four squares and trying to make a decision based on a building. But really, our responsibility is not to look into, you know, one year in the future, it's looking, you know, 20 years into the future, 40 years into the future, 100 years in the future. I know that you also would not be satisfied if any year this material started flaking and really started to degrade very quickly. I know that you wouldn't be satisfied with that also, and you'd probably go after some warranty information and that sort of thing. With the design of the building, I know that you've had a hard time kind of nailing down that look that you want, and that's why the Trespa material has come up. If in a year this does fail, are there options? Is there that next step of, well, you know, it's not a good material, therefore I'm going to something else? Or would it require as much deliberation and therefore possibly some building redesign to accomplish the look that really does tie in the architecture with the material?
So if I can speak first, and then Rex and I have worked together a long time, and he can attest to this, you're completely right. My personal interest, my business interest is in this building looking great. We take a lot of pride. We will do mock-ups. It's my hope that it will not be a condition of this. As I previously mentioned, we are displaced now. And so if we are looking at another six months or a year of working out of a temporary space, it would probably be better for us to move forward with the interior renovations that we started with, and we'll maintain the exterior, you know, paint, things of that nature, but not change it so much because we really have to get back in the building as soon as we can. And my fear, if we make some conditions, ordering of the material and producing that and getting that right, it's going to take a while. And I want to be able to go for permit as soon as we can. To answer your question though, if it doesn't, come out the way that we want, you know, when we throw up our mock-up, if it doesn't, what are we going to do? We're going to continue to look. Could it be a redesign? Absolutely. I'm not going to put up something that doesn't work. We have vetted so many materials over the last two years to try and get to this look, and we have confidence, we're still going to make sure that we're doing it right. Rex had a detailed call with the manufacturer on how this is going to be produced and how it is going to look, down to the reveals and what color, what we're going to see. We have studied that. And I can just say that if in a year there's a durability issue, absolutely, we're going after somebody. We're going to see, you know, if they say it's going to hold up a certain way and it doesn't, we're going to make sure that we stick to that. But if it doesn't ultimately look the way we want, or something's wrong in another year or two, we will consider another phase left, you know? That product could change. New products could come on the market. We can continue to look at that and study that. But we really have spent a lot of time and hope that, you know, you guys, I hear it, so you know that we care just as much as you do. And we don't want to put our brand on a building that doesn't look good in that spot. And, you know, I think that would be all I have to say about that. If you want to say anything else about alternatives or our process through the last two years, you're welcome to.
Yes, we've, as Ashley said, we've looked at a lot of materials. We've discussed mock-ups. We've actually looked into the kind of mock-up you're talking about, but it was quite expensive, and we did, what comes first, chicken or the egg? We didn't want to spend all the money on the mock-up until we had more confidence that the commission would accept the material. But I think we still want to do a mock-up. And we are very, we are very interested in, as Mark was talking about, the way these things are put together. That's something that's concerned me greatly, and what I found with almost all materials, there is some compromise. And, you know, there are edges to think about, and we have a lot of edges on this building, and, you know, very concerned about how all that comes together. It, I mean, the reality is those edges may not, those edges aren't going to look exactly like wood. So there has to be some, you know, we have to think about this in a slightly different way. But we would like to do, I think we've been planning on doing a mock-up. And our issue, but our issue right now is we can't wait. If we can proceed to get a building permit and do a mock-up, and would go ahead with what we're doing. And if the mock-up, if the mock-up is not acceptable to us and/or you, I think we'd be in a position to change the material at that point.
Correct. I mean, I think the big issue here is, to Rex's point, we didn't want to do the mock-up too early. You know, if money were no object and time were an issue, we would have done the mock-up at preliminary and set it out on the lot so that you all could have driven there and seen it. But the reality of how this material is produced and the cost that would be involved with that did make sense if we couldn't have the buy-in from the commission to begin with. So really, in our mind, it was, let's make sure that this works, and if it does, we're still going to proceed with that. Because again, we care just as much as you do on how that ends up finishing. But the approval here would allow us to get moving, would allow us to get to permit, would allow us to start our project, keeping my timeline moving so that I'm not further delayed and displaced in our temporary operating location. Because as I mentioned before, we've been waiting for 10 years to replace the old boiler HVAC and do some plumbing upgrades. And, you know, I think we're at the point where we really can't afford to lose another year. It's been almost three since we started. And now that the staff is already out of the building, I don't want that space to sit vacant for too long and become, you know, an eyesore on that corner. But we will, we will do a mock-up, is our thought process with the approval of the commission on the final development plan and master sign plan today.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Rex. I do want to highlight one thing that Jane said about this particular site and primary versus secondary material. And Chase, I'm going to hitch up for percentages here in just a minute. So, you know, this is a uniquely designed building, and frankly, it's a very good-looking building. We look at the mock-ups. We appreciate your listening to us with the reduction in the sign, especially on the non-drive-through. I don't know which orientation I'm looking at right now, so the non-drive-through, the walls there. But Jane mentioned the primary material versus secondary material. Code allows for certain primary materials because of the look established by city council, the community plan, and of course, the Dublin standards that we all abide by. In looking at this, we take that wood as the primary material because it is the most protruding elevation. It's what we see the most. However, if you look past that wood, you see a bunch of glass, and that glass is all around the perimeter of the building. And then, of course, we have the roof shielding and that sort of thing on the top. So Chase, looking at the building, if the elevation were plain, meaning P-L-A-N-E, not P-L-A-I-M, if the elevation, the front elevation were plain and that glass then brought to the same elevation as the wood, would the wood still qualify as the primary surface percentage-wise? And if you don't know, the "I don't know" is a perfectly acceptable answer. Or would the glass then be the primary and that wood secondary?
Honestly, I'm not quite sure how to answer that question. Nikki or Jenny, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, Rebecca, I think what you're describing would require a bit more staff analysis. So we would need to look exactly at what they're proposing to make a determination like that.
So do you have percentages? Do you know what percentage of an elevation in this particular zone has to be primary material in order to be the primary material and what would qualify as a secondary material?
Yes. So a primary material is required to cover 80% of an elevation.
All right. So I think that we're mid-range anyway, you know, just estimating by the visuals where it looks like the wood is not 20% of the building, even if you brought it to the same elevation, the same, I want to say sphere, the same plane surface. But I do want to highlight that before the commission moves forward on anything. I think Jane made a good point in calling out those primary versus secondary materials that have been established to date by Dublin. Honestly, I think it's a great-looking building. I think the sign package, and if I heard my fellow commissioners right, there, of course, was some, hey, you know, wouldn't it be nice if? But Warren, for you, for your knowledge, if this were going Bridge Street code, the Bridge Street code would give them the three signs, and the three signs, Nikki, correct me if I'm wrong, would be within that code. They would have the one elevation, excuse me, the one wall sign on each of those frontages and one additional sign. And in this case, it would be that monument sign. And so that would fit with the Bridge Street code if we were applying the Bridge Street code. So before we move forward, I just do want the commissioners to highlight a couple of items on the material itself. We understand that it's great look. We understand that the applicant has done a fair amount of We understand that the applicant has done a fair amount of due diligence in looking at the durability. I think that one item that I'd like to highlight in addition to that primary secondary is the edging. And so on your samples, if you look at your samples and you look at the edge, the edge has a very, very, very different look than the, the surface area of the material. And with the layered look of the exterior of the building, there is a lot of edge that would be visible as you're walking toward the building, that upper and lower, the upper and lower edge. This is the image that I'm looking at here in the dual, ah, sorry, the, the dual stack here. So that's just for consideration. All in all, I think it's a fantastic building. I very much appreciate the applicant working with staff and, and looking at the, the alternatives. And, you know, I pulled up Benichi Ha, who was used on a Starbucks. And you're right, I don't care for it as much as the Trespa. But I do want to make sure that, that we are looking at this eyes wide open and understanding while the applicant is also not going to accept a product that is not durable, that does not hold up and will have some type of second plan. We don't want to turn down a material just because it's new, because that's one of the reasons why Dublin is what it is, is because we've, we've gotten some of the new products when they're out there, when they're durable, when we have taken them. This one is just a little, a little difficult time gearing for a, a number of the commissioners to embrace. That being said, is there any other conversation, any other discussion before we move forward?
Yeah, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Yeah, I just, quick comment, I, I think your, your points are really well taken. I, I would like to ask the applicant though, it says the samples are not representative of the size, the thickness and edge finishings. Okay, so you were mentioning how the edge is finished. Has the applicant seen an actual piece of this that's going to go on a building? And, and, and does it look like this or does it look like something else? Because it says, this disclaimer says it's not representative of what, of what the material looks like.
Yeah, very tend to be.
No, there's a, there's a fitting that goes on the edge. I mean, this is, I was saying before, we're very concerned about how, you know, how you put these things together and what the details are. And in looking at just about, in every product that has a wood finish, the edge, you know, there is a, there is a piece that goes on, there's a fitting piece that goes on the edge that is colored similarly to the grain, you know, but it, you know, it, you know, it is when you look right at it, you know, to be honest, it's not, it's not going to, it's going to look like a different piece of material. And, you know, our, our challenge with this building is we do have so many edges. A lot of these materials, when you see them, are set in and they're surrounded by something. So you don't have to deal with the edge. But every, every material we looked at had a different kind or similar sorts of edge pieces that go on, that go with the material. These things all come, come with the product. And it's essentially, it's a, it's a metal piece, it's generally a metal piece that's colored, colored to be similar to the product. But when you, when you look right at it, you'll see it. But, but when you look at it from a distance, it's, it's not very evident. It, it's actually in the, the, the last rendering we did have the edge features in it. But you really can't, they're very hard to detect in the rendering from a distance. But it is, it's something we talk a lot about and, you know, it's, it concerns us too. But that's what they mean. The, the edge that you see there will be covered up, you know, at, at the exposed edge, you know, where the edge is exposed.
Follow-up question that's completely unrelated that I failed to ask before, parking. So you're requesting more parking than the maximum? Can you help us understand, a lot of our banking institutions have gone with smaller and smaller accounted parking spaces because so many people are doing online banking or the drive-throughs meeting their needs. Can you help us understand the additional parking need?
So we originally, we're keeping the original parking plan, we're actually reducing the parking. So we've removed spaces, just given the way the remaining parking spaces fall, it doesn't really make sense for us to remove them. We've already removed the ones along the, the street front edge. But just the way the site is laying out, it would be awkward to really kind of remove anymore. But in the spirit of trying to get that closer to code, we have removed some. So we're not asking for more parking, but it is technically more. We already had more than what the maximum was. So we're, we're inching closer to in code.
Got it. So it, it's more based on what's already existing and less on what the business needs to operate?
Well, it is that, and you're correct, we don't have a ton of day-to-day traffic there. But as you previously mentioned, that shopping center is kind of the heart of it all. And so we use that extra parking for St. Patty's Day parade and we do donuts. And sometimes we'll put the bleachers out there. And so we do kind of need the space. And then also, this building has additional space in the basement. I actually trained there when I joined the bank 15 years ago. That's where our training room was. And it's been pretty much unutilized, but you know, in the future, is there potential for us to open that up to the community for civic groups to use or what else could that be? I think there is, there are going to be times where we're going to have events or grand openings or business after hours or chamber events, and we're going to need some of that extra parking. We, we have an agreement with Casto and so we can always utilize that other area if needed. But on those big event days, that parking lot can get pretty full.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Rex. All right, any other commission, any other discussion from the commission? Christina?
Thank you, Ms. Call. I want to go back to the material and just make my final assessment of this conversation. At our last review, we conditioned the approval of this package upon the applicant continuing to work with staff to compare alternate materials. And that was completed in due diligence. And given that the, the, the look can be achieved with this material, the durability has been proven, I'm in favor of this material. However, I would recommend that the applicant, as they move on to the next phase, if we approve and it goes to city council, I think it could be really beneficial to have a larger sample size, a mockup of this. As someone who just redid her floors in her house, it looks a lot different when it's this size versus the size you're going to go for. And I think that could help make your case as you move forward, potentially, just a suggestion. But I'm in favor of the material. And I think the requirements were met based on our last condition.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. We are going to take these motions individually. So we're going to start with the parking plan. So at this point, I will entertain, yes.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to respond to something that Ms. Kennedy said in reference to going forward to city council. The, the approval of the final development plan would be, would allow them then to go forward with submitting for a building permit. So I didn't want, I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that council then would have a chance to see a, a mockup.
Oh, okay. Thank you for, thank you for clarifying that.
All right, so moving forward, we are looking at the parking plan. So I will entertain a motion to approve the parking plan.
No move.
Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Supalak.
Yeah, yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Next, I am actually going to go out of order. I'm going to go with the master sign plan with three conditions.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the master sign plan with the three conditions given.
Thank you, Ms. Thank you, Leo. Thank you, Mr. Grimes. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Mr. Supalak.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Schneer. Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we have on the screen right now, final development plan with one condition, but there is no condition listed on the screen.
Yeah, I apologize. I had started to write a potential condition, but did not finish that. I guess I want to confirm kind of where we all landed with that.
So Chase, are you talking the mockup for the larger scale?
Yeah, exactly.
All right, so this is one of the reasons why I did it in this order. So commission, looking to you now. Seeing as it, it, it appears that the commission is wholly in favor of the, the overall feel with the development plan, but is hesitant on the material itself. There has been a suggestion by the commission to have a larger scale mockup. The applicant is requesting that that not be a condition of approval so that they can move forward and proceed along. Understanding also that with a full-scale mockup, they also could love it or hate it. And so looking to the commission on what your, what your feelings are on this large-scale mockup, if it is a condition or just a request from the commission. So Mr. Supalak, I think you threw it out there first.
I, I don't, I don't know that I can get over it. You know what I mean? Again, I, I, I know Trespa, I've used Trespa, I have not used wood exterior Trespa. I, we so, so, I think everybody on this call so loves the concept. I just don't know that I'm convinced yet. And so I, I don't, you know, a mockup can get daunting, large and daunting. There, there's no doubt about that. But at the same time too, a lot of Warren's questions, Rex, like he clearly has, has not sort of experienced, you know, wall, wall panel material like this, the synthetic sort of high composite boards like this, to, to know what kind of thickness might, we might experience, to know kind of what the reveal might look like, to know what a corner might, might look like. I, I don't know that this, this mockup has to be big or expensive, but it should be planks. It should be some planks, it should be, each of those planks should be sort of edged the way the reveal is going to be edged, right? This could be on a piece of plywood, it doesn't have to be built on a wall necessarily. I, I think we just can't make the decision on three-by-three pieces. I, I don't think, I don't think Ashley and Rex can make the decision on three-by-three pieces either. That's, this is an exercise they are going to have to do regardless.
All right, Ms. Fox, do you want to go next with your opinion on conditions?
Yeah, you know, I think we're all looking for the design to be, given the character we're looking for, and that is a wood look. And I have not seen any suggestion on actually using a composite wood of any sort. There's a lot of wood cladding that has durability that will go long past, that is not just a cedar, a plain cedar. There's, you know, I'm looking, I've, I've looked at all the pictures of, of Trespa. I don't feel that it gives that authenticity and, but I haven't seen it in, at all. And I, and if you could show me a building in town, I'd go look at it. I think in, in Bridge Park, they're using wood cladding that is epa or synthetics that looks much more realistic. So I, like Mark, I can't get past the Trespa. And I'm not so sure that just one sample of Trespa is going to do it for me when I know that there are other products out there that will give a more authentic wood look. So I, I love the design and I appreciate Moody Nolan and the architects do great work all over town. I, I don't doubt that at all. I just can't get past this Trespa. I just don't feel like it's going to give us the look. And have you used it, Rex? Have you used it somewhere else in the city?
No, now you're going to need it.
I haven't personally used it, but the firm is using it in other places right now.
I think that's what just makes me so nervous about it. I, I'm just worried that it's going to give a plastic look. It's just going to have this contemporary, modern, synthetic, flat, plastic look. That's what I'm worried about. So I, I can't vote for it right now. So I, I'd like to see a, a real wood product that has more durability and, and more authenticity, more warmth, but.
Ashley, is there any, anywhere in, you know, I don't need to just stay in Dublin. Is there anywhere within driving distance that this product is on any elevation?
Yes, it's on, it's on a couple of Bank of Americas, not, not using it the same, exactly the same way. It's not the same color.
It's not really even the same product.
It's not.
Exactly, because Trespa has many products that they use. But when we were looking for, because I, I believe it was, I can't remember if it was preliminary or if it was even conceptual, when we were looking for local drivable samples, that was really the closest one, that Bank of America and Pal. But that particular product that they're using is not the identical one that we're using. And they're using it differently in the application. So it's, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. But I would, I would just like to reiterate that we care just as much. The mockup is an important part of it. We have already done our homework to understand what the time and the cost is going to be of that. But we cannot afford to have it be a condition of us moving forward with this project, given the fact that this is three years in the making. We have a boiler system that has given out, our customers and our staff is now displaced. I need to resume normal business operations for, for, for us and for you. And, and getting this process and this project moving is really important to us. And, and you have my commitment, you have the bank's commitment, you have Moody Nolan's commitment. All of our reputations are on the line here. Making this a condition really forces our hand to take a look at our ability to, to continue down this path. And I think we would have to take a real hard look at, from a business perspective, is it going to make sense for us? Or given the fact that we know Casto is not going to be doing any improvements, there's nothing that I know that PNC is working on. We can solve the original goal, which is, you know, getting the building where we need it to be from a functional perspective. We could also do some interior renovations without having, you know, to displace our staff and our clients for an additional, it, it could be, it could be months. And it's just not desirable for us to maintain the operations that we're doing in Bridge Park. We don't have happy amenities that we need as a bank. So it is really important to us and I appreciate your time. You have my commitment that we will not put something up that does not look good. And we have spent almost a year studying this and other materials. We're with you and you have our commitment that it will look good on the corner of that building. But it would be my ask that it not be a, a condition of us moving forward with this project.
Thank you, Ashley, and thank you, Rex. All right, Mr. Fishman?
Yeah, there's got to be a solution to, to dealing with this. Can we approve it with the condition that they bring back a sample our next meeting? And, and, and also have them research something that, that, research other materials that have a more realistic look? I mean, we might see it and like it. And, and the, the, the thing that makes me say, I would like to say, let's approve it, that, that they seem very sincere and so on. The problem is that bank was built in the 60s and I, the, it, 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 it hasn't changed since the 60s. So they're not going to, if this thing starts looking, I'm worried about durability. And, 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 and it starts looking bad in 10 years, they're not going to replace that. Okay, I mean, that building's looked bad for years and years and years. The only thing that's been done to it is, I remember when we had, let them add the drive-through thing, which wasn't an architectural wonder when they put that on. So I, I, I really sympathize. I'd like to see how maybe we can table it and have them come back with a, not a mockup, but, but the siding on plywood so we can see it. Our next meeting, which is in January, and we're in January. So I, I'd like to, I, I sympathize with them that they want to get back and their hearts in the right place. But, and I'm not an architect. The two people that are talking about it know more about these materials than I do. And, and, and Mark's right, I, I, I know nothing about this except what I see here. And so, anyway, that, I don't know if we can come up with some kind of solution to think we could table it, maybe let them bring, that will only be a two-week delay. You know, so...
Thank you.
I think the question back to the applicant is, what's it going to take to get a mock-up? A reasonable mock-up that this Commission can get eyes on? I guess that's the question, right, that we've all come to, or that some Commissioners have proposed?
Rex, do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I mean, and as I said, we looked into this. We, I was actually hoping to get exactly the kind of mock-up that you were describing, about three-by-three, showing the full planks, showing the edges, showing all the details. Several thousand dollars, about, you know, at least $3,000. And a few weeks, I'm not sure. It depends on the availability. Part of it depended on whether they had the availability of the specific product that we wanted to use. And that was the question. If they didn't, then it has to be shipped over here from the Netherlands. And which could take, you know, multiple weeks, yeah. So, it's not a simple thing. It's something we do want, and we've been wanting to do, you know, during construction or before we get to that point in construction, having a mock-up, so we know exactly what we were getting. But in terms of alignment, coming back with something that I think would change your opinion in a couple of weeks, it's not, we don't think that's possible. It's much more complicated.
And the other comment that I'll make is on the timeline. It's not just related to the approval, but, you know, there are certain things, very long lead times that we need to be ordering right now. And I don't have the confidence in telling them, releasing them on this design if ultimately we're not going to be able to use this product. We have the confidence in this product. But if I can't go for permits, I can't order steel. I can't order a lot of things that I need to get in the schedule right now for this product to stay on track. So, it's really not just about the mock-up and the timing. It's about keeping the project moving. And if I can't go for permit, I can't do those things. It's pushing me out further and further and further in the process. It's not really just about the time or the money that it's going to take for the mock-up, because we're going to do that. But I don't have, you know, I don't want to continue to delay this project because there are ripple down sets to it, and we're already in kind of a tough situation as a business.
Now, Ashley, you called out the Bank of America in Powell and said it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. Is their material a wood look, regardless of the color? Is it a wood look?
Yeah, it's a wood look, but if you go to that location, because I have spent many, many a day driving around Dublin. I've probably shown up on a few police calls about suspicious women touching my building kind of thing. When you go and look at that, take that Trespa sample that is there, you'll see that theirs doesn't have the grain that that particular product has. Also, the way that they're using it, they're using the application where it's like a tongue-in-groove. And in our world, that's not what we're doing. We're taking this and we're making planks. And the way it's going to appear is going to look different on the side. So, I don't want you to go there, see that product, and have it be representative of what we're going to do there. I think they finished the edges where they cut differently, and the install really wasn't, I don't think, executed as well as it could have been, based on what I've seen in other places. So, that is, again, something that we've spoken at length with, and is the install and making sure that we have somebody that has experience and attention to detail to make sure that we get that right. But that would be, that would be the main difference, is it's not going to have the same texture. The color is a little bit browner, and the install is a little bit straight, yeah, so... Their product is also thinner. So, it looks like their product is closer to, or at least what you can see is closer to the sample that you have, whereas ours is much thicker.
Thank you. All right. Commission, looking back to you for options. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but in order to table, we would have to have the applicant request to table. Is that correct? And still lacking?
Yes.
That is correct.
Yes, that is correct.
All right, so it looks like, and Ashley, correct me if I'm wrong, but that is not something you're interested tonight, is a request to table?
That's correct. We'd like to move forward.
Thank you, Ashley. So, looking at the Commission then, our options are to approve with a condition that is not supported by the applicant, to approve or to vote. And then, you have to get me on this one, because this is a little odd, the way that we do this. A motion to approve with reflecting the positive or the negative of that from the Commission. Is that correct?
Right. You would want to move to approve, and then a yes would approve the final development plan without conditions, and a no would disapprove it.
Thank you. All right. So, Commission, looking for a motion.
I'd like to make a motion. Oh, go ahead.
Okay. I have a first. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Beal?
Ms. Fox?
No.
Mr. Fishman?
No.
Mr. Supalak?
No.
Ms. Call, excuse me?
No.
Mr. Snare?
Yes.
Mr. Grimes?
Yes.
Did I forget anyone's?
Ms. Kennedy.
Ms. Kennedy, sorry.
It's a yes for me.
Well, Ashley, Rex, and Jennifer, yes, Jennifer's still on. We certainly appreciate your time and hope that you can see this was not, this was not an easy decision for us. Again, we will stress, we love the design of the building. It looks fantastic. We love that the facelift is there. This particular product, though, just gives us angst, and we're not convinced of its durability. And while we appreciate and we trust that you have done your due diligence, the City of Dublin trusts us to do our own. And that means really coming to our own touch, feel, experience, something of this material and understanding that it could hold up for 20, 30, 50 years. And this was probably, this was probably the most difficult decision I've made on planning Commission thus far. So, I hope that you can appreciate that. I know that we want that corner upgraded just as much as you do. And we know that you're in a tough spot and you need to resume operations. And if that changes your path forward, we understand and can appreciate that. We also, you know, like I mentioned before, that shopping center is critical to Dublin. It is a gateway. It is utilized and overutilized in some cases where the parade goes through there. And we really appreciate the partnership of all of the businesses in that shopping center. And we just want to be good partners. This one was just a really tough decision on that material.
All right. Thank you, guys. We appreciate your time and your input. And I understand that that's a difficult decision for you guys to make, and we respect that.
Thank you. Well, we certainly appreciate that, or certainly hope that Bridge Park meets your needs for right now and that you can resume normal operations, whatever that means in this 2021 world, as soon as possible and meet the needs of the Dublin residents and of your own employees. And we appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we are now looking, later in the agenda, we have this evening cases seven and eight, which we're going to hear together. I'll read both cases into the record. The Architectural Review Board has made a recommendation of approval to this Commission on both items, and we have received public comment as well. Case number seven, Architectural Review Board zoning code update. This is case 19-007, ADMC Administrative Request Code Amendment. This application is a request for an amendment to the zoning code sections including definitions, architectural review, Bridge Street District, and appendices F and G to address the historic Dublin boundary and Architectural Review Board development standards and procedures. Case eight, Historic District Rezoning, 20-188Z is a zoning review. This application is a request for area zoning, rezoning from the Bridge Street District to historic district designations in conjunction with the Architectural Review Board zoning code amendments. And Jenny, it looks like you are going to entertain us this evening.
Good evening. I'm going to try. I guess I have some helpers here, too, which I'll introduce here in a second. But again, I'm really pleased to be before you tonight with the draft code and rezoning, which we've been working on extensively over the last two years, two and a half years, lots of collaboration, and I'll briefly touch on that tonight. As I mentioned, I'm going to give a brief intro. Greg Dale, who we have worked with extensively, and I believe most of you have met and maybe worked within more of a training capacity. He's been our consultant help on this since the very beginning in 2018. He's worked with us on a variety of other code projects as well. So, he's going to give an overview of the code once I'm done giving the little intro part here and background and talk through the rezoning. And then I also have Kathy Bryan here, who's the Chair of ARB. She's here to lend her support, and if there's any questions or any clarifications from the Board's perspective, I know she'll be willing to chime in here as long as can attest to, you know, the robust review we've done over the years on this topic. So, with that, I'll, like I said, I'll give you a little background. In 2018, Council recommended to staff and give us direction to look at the historic district and remove that from the Bridge Street District. And the intent of that was to really try to make sure that we could come up with development standards and guidelines, parameters that ensured the preservation of the district and the character of that, that they really felt like within Bridge Street, within the historic district being within Bridge Street was really eroding that, and development was not being adherent to the character and the context there. So, wanted staff to look at how to address that. So, they recommended that we remove, as I mentioned, the historic district from the Bridge Street, which then also included us amending the boundary to remove the library, the parking garage, and then the Bridge Park West buildings, Z1 and Z2, and then the plaza that goes in between those, also removing that from the historic district, given that their concern was the development that's within those areas also doesn't fit within the character and the context of the district, and didn't want people to be pointing to that as part of, part of the historic district. So, that's been modified based on their direction. And in order to then, you know, remove these areas from Bridge Street, that required us to take a look at the zoning code and ensure that the requirements within the code match the character and the context that we're really wanting to replicate there. Again, balancing preservation, that's sort of our number-one piece of this, but also, you know, providing opportunity for infill and making sure that that's appropriate. So, we really have worked hard on that. And with the code, there is then also the supplemental piece of the guidelines, which we have, are finishing our work on, and you'll see that at a subsequent meeting. We don't have that before you this evening. We really wanted to get the code in front of you since ARB has reviewed that. But the guidelines, again, are a very significant part of this and the character piece and the more subjective parts of that. But really wanting to make sure that that matches, and the ARB has that as a true guiding document as well as when they see applications. So, that's some general background, how we got here. Over those two-year period, again, we started with a stakeholder group that really started looking at the guidelines and the code together and providing that initial guidance. We had, and Greg was included in those meetings and helped guide that process. That included residents, business owners, commercial property owners, Historic Dublin Business Association representatives, as well as Historic Society. So, they gave us some initial guidance that got us kicked off on this adventure. And from there, we had multiple public input sessions in all varieties, whether it's a big meeting, or we had office hours in the district so people could come and talk to us. And then had multiple reviews in a public setting through ARB, and we've been before Planning Commission before, again, maybe a year or so ago, just to get to introduce the project. So, overall, we've had over 20 opportunities for either public engagement or public review of some kind. So, we've really, really tried to make sure we've covered all our bases and looked at this from a collaborative, collaborative nature. So, in terms of specifics for the rezoning, as I mentioned, it's removing it from Bridge Street. So, largely, the rezoning part is honestly administrative. It's changing the nomenclature from BSD Historic Core to HD Historic Core. So, we're dropping that Bridge Street name and putting it back in the historic district. So, a lot of it, like I said, is very administrative. We do have two instances where ARB made a recommendation for the rezoning piece that were different than originally proposed. So, the first part of that was related to those properties that Council asked us to remove from the historic district altogether and retain those at Bridge Street, again, which are the library, parking garage, the plaza, and the two Bridge Park West buildings. Staff originally was proposing to rezone those to a Bridge Street Siota neighborhood. And the Architecture Review Board recommended that that retain the historic transition zoning, which staff agreed with and felt was appropriate in that that helps maintain the character and context and the requirements for that, that that would be more in keeping with what's there, and that's their current zoning and their current process. So, the only difference would be any modifications to those properties would come before planning a zoning commission as opposed to the Architecture Review Board. So, the process would change for those a little bit. But the proposed zoning for that is, would stay on historic transition. And then the other change ARB requested was there are several properties on North River View that were previously or currently zoned within historic transition or historic core. And ARB recommended that those be rezoned to either historic public for park on the east side of North River View, and the properties that are on the west side of North River View, that those be rezoned to historic residential to maintain that single-family character, which that is very timely, as City Council took action on Monday to acquire those properties as another effort to further that. So, that actually, the timing of that worked out really well. So, the proposed rezoning for that, as I mentioned, then, was a little different in the maps before you and your packet tonight reflect those. I'm happy to answer any questions about the rezoning part, or we can save it to the end. But Greg's going to really talk through the code in a general sense and sort of go through sort of as each section, just so you can get a sense of what that is. We were intending to go as a page-by-page review, but just to give you sort of a general feel for what we did within the various portions of the draft code and how we addressed comments along the way. So, unless, Rebecca, you want to talk through any zoning questions, I'll kick it off to Greg.
Yep, I think that is appropriate. Welcome, Greg. Nice to have you tonight.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I wanted to start by thanking Kathy for joining this meeting. I think one of the things that has been clear during this process is the kind of passion and commitment that the ARB and the residents and everyone has with regard to the historic districts. And that was reflected, and Jenny used the term robust. It was a very robust process with the ARB in particular. I think we had six different meetings, Kathy, I think, that we had. And Jenny mentioned page-by-page review, which we're not doing here. We did that with the ARB, literally page-by-page review, and then a series of changes and then follow-up reviews. So, it was reflective, I think, of just the commitment that the Board had. So, what I'd like to do is keep this at a high level to start with, and then we can go as deeply as the Commission wants to go. And I just, I want to start by reiterating what Jenny mentioned, which is what you have before you now is just a zoning piece. There is another piece, which is, while it's not zoning, I think... There is another piece, which is, while it's not zoning, I think is just as important and some might argue more important, and that is the design guidelines, which the ARB has been equally thorough in going through, and those will be following here shortly within the next month or so. So we're talking about the historic district, which is zoning, the design guidelines, which is outside zoning, which is essentially the policy guidance to guide the ARB in applying the code. So I just want to make sure that's clear. Let me just kind of give you a tour of the chapter. What you have before you can probably best be understood by breaking it up into some chunks here. So sections, and I'm going to, 153 is in front, I'm always going to say .170. So we're talking about essentially sections 170 and 171. Just the first couple pages, they're basically just boilerplate stuff, the applicability, purpose, and intent, nothing really new there. The real substance comes in, starting with section 172, and then 172, 173, and 174, which is the bulk of what you have in front of you in terms of the content. And those are really the substantive standards that are applicable. And it starts with the permitted uses. This is familiar language to the Planning Commission. There's a table on page four, which is kind of the guts of that, that goes on four, five, and six, which is, you know, the districts and the list of uses that are permitted in the districts, and an indication of whether or not they're permitted or conditionally permitted, and so forth. So the board, the ARB, I think, spent a lot of time with that. Then you have what are known as use-specific standards that start on page seven. And what those are, are certain uses that require some particular attention that is unique to those uses. So for example, bed and breakfasts that talk about how many people and how many days and so forth. So those are things that are unique to those uses. So those are essentially the use-related standards. Then we go into the site standards, and starting on page 13 are, again, the guts of the site standards. Those are, you know, things like lot width, lot size, building height, lot coverage, and so forth. And this is another part of the code that receives a great deal of attention from the ARB. In particular, the issue that the ARB and staff and the consultants all wrestled with and focused a lot of attention on is particularly in the residential sub-district is the, essentially calibrating the standards to address the issue of residential compatibility. So there was a lot of time spent on that. So then we get into, starting on about, well, really, right after that, there's a whole chunk that is about 30 pages long, which are the development standards related to things like parking standards and loading and stormwater and landscaping and fences and lighting and signage. Most of that, almost all of that was essentially carried over from the Bridge Streets districts. There really wasn't a lot of comment on that. There really weren't a lot of changes on that. There were a few things, but by and large, that big chunk that takes you all the way up to about page 53 was pretty much carried over from the current regulations. Then there's a whole section, starting on page 53, section 174, on design standards. So it's a little, just to clarify, so we have the design guidelines that are a separate document, and those are the things like shoulds and encouraged and so forth. But there were certain things that the board wanted to make sure were codified, that they weren't just in that outside-the-code policy level. So there are design standards that relate to certain things related to roof types and entrances and windows and shutters, that the board thought were important enough that they needed to be codified. And you kind of think of those as the shalls versus the shoulds. So there's a section in there that deals with code. And then pretty much everything, starting with page 59, is procedural stuff. So it's the purposes and duties and membership of the ARB. It's the procedures for the submitting of applications, and there's a little bit of what I think of as a flow chart on page 62, I think is what it is. It kind of is a roadmap for what kind of applications get routed to what bodies and so forth. So pretty straightforward stuff there. Procedures for the historic district designations are there, maintenance. We also spent a fair amount of time on the demolition regulations to give the ARB some more tools to be able to evaluate proposed demolitions of buildings, both buildings that are considered in the vernacular of this contributing versus and buildings that are not contributing, and just, I think, just giving the board some better guidance and some better tools on addressing those requests for demolitions. And then the other thing I'll point out is that in doing this, there were a series of other kinds of definition-related issues that needed to be addressed. So you all, I think, also have a section that's a totally different section that's related to definitions. So those are just definitions that came out of this process that needed to be added to the overall definition section of the code. So that's a roadmap to the code. Jenny, Kathy, did you want to add anything? Or Nikki, you were deeply involved in that also. Did I miss anything?
No, I thank you. I think you did a great job of representing that. You know, all I can say is, we spent a lot of time on this. I'm hoping that it's pretty clean for you.
All right. Well, thank you all for the introduction. The fact that a lot of time was spent is very apparent. And so it makes our job a lot easier when not only can we trust the individuals putting the work in, but reading through it. You did your due diligence. I think the public comment was illustrative of just the amount of attention to detail and public engagement that went into this. And so, thank you. That makes it a whole lot easier on us. All right. Looking to the commission now for questions, comments, discussion. So I'll just go based on volunteers, if anyone wants to head up some discussion. Mr. Grimes.
Question. I know that you'd mentioned about the carve-outs requested by council in terms of the map. I can understand a lot of that, but I was trying to figure out the line that goes through the school property, the north of Bridge Street but on the west. How is that line determined, or is there a logic behind that as the dividing line?
That's a great question and a good item to point out. That was discussed as well with the board and amongst staff. That is actually the current boundary there, although it cuts through the middle. If you see those properties sort of on a street view, it aligns with the 1919 building, which is the historic school building. So it's meant to capture that particular building. And we had some discussions with the school about potentially altering that line and moving it further to the west. Their desire was to keep it in the same location, so we were adhering to the school's request to keep that where it was, and maintain that 1919 building under ARB's purview.
I know, and a couple meetings ago, we were talking about the issues where people were building too much, overbuilding on an existing lot, buying an old house and rebuilding. Is that fairly well addressed in here?
Yeah, we had very, and I'll let maybe Greg and Kathy chime in on that too, but we had a very, very in-depth discussion. We did a lot of studying amongst the staff, and then also one of our board members, who was an architect, had someone on his staff also do some research to look at, and you'll see within the code that we've incorporated. So it's not just your overall lot coverage, it's looking at setbacks that are appropriate, but also your maximum building coverage, so that you would be limited to a certain percentage for your lot. So it's really trying to get to that key factor of you're not able to develop end-to-end your lot, as we did discuss as part of our joint meeting. So we really, really worked on looking at what's out there, what's the current context of historic homes, new homes, what's the right balance of that number, and being as respectful as we can, and allowing people to redevelop too. So I mean, we want to, again, try to balance all those pieces. But I don't know, Greg or Kathy, if you have something else to add.
I just want to highlight the page 13 and 14, where that is addressed. That was remarkable to me. So the 45% on the lot coverage, but then the building at 25%, the setbacks according to the chart below there, I mean, all of the attention to detail. Thank you.
And well, thank you for saying that. And Mr. Grimes, answering your question, that issue probably got more attention than anything in the 690 pages or whatever it is.
And the whole gist of the reason for carving this out and maintaining the character, you can't let something get out of hand so quickly, is that could, especially with the quality of properties in there, and people want to put money into it, that's very understandable. But just don't overdo it. I commend you all for the great work you've done. This is a great document, a great tool for Dublin, and I think it makes a lot of sense to me. Congratulations on doing all this hard work.
Well, it was definitely a team effort. And yeah, we had people from our team even going out and measuring houses on different streets to see where their peak was, just so. We really wanted to preserve, I mean, because otherwise, why are we doing this? We wanted to preserve that historic quality. And while I understand people want to build bigger, there are plenty of places to do that, and Historic Dublin may not be one of those.
Thank you, Kathleen. Other questions, call out discussion items from commission. Jane?
Right. I have total faith in the Architecture Review Board's work. I know how much energy they put into this. So I'm just going to ask some questions, just kind of a beta check for the code. One of the problems that we had in the past was that the Bridge Street Code did not give codified permission to the ARB if there was a conflict. So I guess what I'm looking for is to be sure that when decisions are made in the historic district, that if there's a conflict between any of these pieces and parts, the ARB has the ability to make the final decision within the historic district. Do you know what I'm saying? I didn't, I've read through it, but I haven't like highlighted every one of them, because I know I'll get another look at this. But that was what happened before, is that if there was a conflict, the Bridge Street Code had the upper hand. And I want to be sure that in the historic district, that the Architecture Review Board, utilizing their guidelines on top of the code gives them the ability to make hard decisions. Do they have it?
I think so. And I think that issue of the relationship between the code and the guidelines, I think, in part because of some of the comments that I've heard you make before, we did spend a lot of time on making sure that that is the case. So you know, there's a balance between code and guidelines and discretion on the part of the board. And I think, I think that we've hit that balance in a solid way, I think. Jenny, do you want to?
Yeah, I don't just think, I know we did. I mean, we took that issue very seriously, because Kathy's least favorite saying is, "It's just a guideline." And that's not true. I mean, it's a very important piece of this, and we want to make sure that they're taken seriously. And I mean, I'm joking aside, but I mean, we really did want to make sure that the ARB felt like the code was the shall, and the guidelines was the should, and they matched, because we do have times in the current code and guidelines where those don't align to the extent, Jane, that we added criteria in the back of, in the review process part that requires adherence to the guidelines. So I mean, we took that even a step further, I think, than we have in other instances.
You know, and the other thing is, not to make it harder, but to make it clearer. Certainly, progress to, one of the problems we've had in the past, and I live in this in the district, one of the problems is, you never know what the answer's going to be. You don't know. You can spend a lot of money, you don't know what the answer's going to be. So as long as it's clear. The other thing I want to bring up too is on the boundary lines. Personally, I think the Architecture Review Board should be the reviewer of the library, the parking garage, and the Z buildings, and I'll tell you why. They were the ones who determined their design in the first place. And also, I think that as things change over there, unless the Architecture Review Board can control in some ways, and I'll point to one of them, the lighting at the library. The lighting at the library is glaring. It doesn't look like any other lighting in the rest of the district. It's on all night long, and the Architecture Review Board could have mediated that, right? But no one's going to mediate it afterwards. So I personally think that it should not be under Planning and Zoning's review. I think it belongs back in the Architecture Review Board's review. Not that we're going to change anything. It's a transition district. It is what it is. It's modern, it's well-loved, but I think that if you're going to control the district, you have to control the heart of it as well. So I would opt for that. And then secondly, and I will avy for this at council, I think that the entire school site needs to be included, and I'll tell you why. The Indian Run Ravine runs along the entire perimeter of that. And that is a cultural amenity that I believe needs to be protected. And I think by having it extend, it seems silly to cut it through the middle of a piece of property. Even though I understand why the school may not want it, I think that it's not going to change the way their property is handled, because on one half of the property, they're burdened by it anyway. And I also think it gives protections to the Indian Run Reserve, which is what the Historic District Task Force was absolutely one of their priorities. So I think the Indian Run Ravine needs to be included in the historic district boundary as well, the entire ravine as public. So those are the two things primarily. And when it comes to the North Riverview, absolutely, now that the city's bought it, the intention was to preserve as much as possible residential. But I will say this, we may not be able to save every residential home as a residence. So what happens if one or two at the end turn into a small little commercial property? Then what happens if you zone it as residential? So I don't know. I don't know. I'm hoping they're all residential, but I don't know.
Well, we would like to see those as residential.
Yeah. I guess we'll see what happens, right?
We're quickly losing our historic footprint, so I think you need to keep that in mind in some of the decisions that are being made.
I think, Kathy, one of the things I would say is, if the building didn't come down and it stayed the little residential house that it is, but it was used, of course, you have a live-work, don't you? You have a live-work option, and that would be, is there a live-work option in the residential? Okay, so then maybe could, an owner could have a small little company thing going on in there or something.
I think that's actually historically accurate, so we'd kind of like to see that.
Okay, good. As long as that's, you know, so that's because of the flux of that right now, not knowing how that's going to change.
Jenny? Piggyback question on that for the live-work. So in the building restrictions, if I remember right, not to exceed 1,800 square foot in a single building and full of 3,000 square foot footprint of a building. Is that kind of, that threw me off a little bit, because if I'm thinking of the 20 by 20 garage, that's 400 square feet. Well, you know, I can get as big as 400 square feet in a 20 by 20 garage, and then I have 1,800 square foot. So I was trying to come up with where the 3,000 came from. Is that really what we were going after with the live-work?
Okay. Let's look at two. Is that, is that? Making one clarification. So under historic residential, live-work is not a permitted use.
It's not.
So if we want to add that, we would have to make that recommendation, which is, we can discuss that. To your question, Rebecca, that is the maximum building footprint under historic south, is that what you're speaking about on page 13?
Yes.
So that is, that limitation was taken So that is, that limitation was taken from the current Bridge Street District requirements and the building, building type requirements, which were, which were modified, and maybe Nikki can remember the year, as a result of some other infill development. And that was the size and limitations that were put on at that time to preserve that character because historic south is sort of transitioning at the southern end of the district and meant to be a little more residential in scale. So we were trying to keep the size of those buildings down in order to not have large scale commercial buildings. So that's where those numbers came from.
I, I'm just trying to understand the differential between the 1,800 square foot in any one building, but a total of 3,000. Well, the only way that I get to a total of maximum 3,000 is an 1,800 square foot building and a 1,200 square foot building. Trying to figure out what that use of that 1,200. It just seems interesting to me to have a secondary building that's nearly the size of the primary. If we have, they count that 1,800 on the, the primary building, then the secondary building, I would think, you know, 30 by 30 or, or something like that. So I was just trying to figure out, was there something like the live work that I wasn't considering in, you know, I have a little office out back along with my garage and it sounds like it's not a permitted use. And so I'm still struggling with that secondary number.
Well, those are maybe two sort of separate things because that's not historic residential. So historic south would allow a live work unit out there. So that would be a difference in terms of use.
Got that.
Okay.
I'm good. All right, other questions at this point?
I don't want to jump in if somebody.
I only have one more question on, on this whole thing. So anybody else questions, comments? Again, I'll reiterate, you guys made our job relatively easy because not only do we trust you, but we've gone through this and wow, you did a remarkable job. That effort is, is shown.
Oh, I thank you. And I will pass that on to the rest of the board.
Yeah, I would, I would just ditto what Ms. Call said, and I think it's evident Kathy and Greg and Jenny, of course, and the staff, the amount of work that's gone into this. I hope it wasn't equivalent to flying around the world two times, as Kathy DeRosa pointed out in our last meeting in December. That was a little bit cringe worthy, but it seems like it might've been at least a trip around the world. And I, and I think the public comment also hit on it too, really. I hope you take that as a compliment that the public can tell the amount of work that's been put into this project. And I know we can as well. So we're very appreciative of your efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And the reason you don't have the guidelines is because we are trying to make it even simpler. And we felt that the code needed to come in front of you first because it's really important, the quicker we can get this through council, the better. But the, the guidelines will also help with selection of paint colors. So if people come within the palette, they don't, if they go within the palette, they won't have to come in front of us. So we're trying to become a little more user friendly there.
Jane, back to you.
Yeah, so I, so you know, I have a couple of questions. One's about the bed and breakfast. It says that the property owner shall reside on the property or manage the facility. So you have, you know, of course, you talk about Airbnbs in the city now. And we do have a small historic property in the middle of, of the historic core, in the commercial area. It's actually, I want to make sure that this would be compliant, I guess is why I'm asking this question. It's Joyce Richards' Little Stone House, the one that always had the little red geraniums. But on anybody who might have a little bed and breakfast, that's being maintained and will be as a bed and breakfast managed by the owner, but he lives in California, has professional management here. So the reason I say that, that I think if you have professional management that's available on a 24 hour basis to someone that has a bed and breakfast in the historic district, I'd hate to see that, that property sold and turned into a commercial property when that is a nice kind of tourist amenity, offering people an opportunity to stay in a historic structure. So is it compliant or not? Because I think we have to think about that. That's how it's operating right now.
And maybe I'll defer to Thad on that if he thinks we should remove that part about the manage, managing the facility to be, yeah, I don't want that to conflict with our short-term rental legislation because that's not the point, that wasn't the point of that.
No, it wasn't. I think the historic district wasn't considered to be, you know, the typical residential community, especially in the commercial core. You know, it's different in the residential area, I get that, but this is in the middle of the commercial core.
I would like, I, I think with, with Jenny, between now and perhaps when it, in front of council, we can clarify that question, just since the short-term rental regulation is so new, I want to make sure that we are, you know, fitting hand in glove with that and not hand in boot.
Right, right. I do think 24-hour availability is essential when you don't have the owner on site. I think that's absolutely has to be a criteria.
Okay, yeah, we can take a look at that prior to.
Yeah. A second question on page nine on H, retail general. It says general retail uses in the historic core and staff should be limited to no more than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. The largest building in the south district is 5,000, that's the L building. Where in the world would you find 10,000 square feet allowed for retail general use? I mean, how does that even compute?
I honestly, I thought we had changed that in a previous version, honestly. So let me, let us look at that and revise that because we have the very same discussion.
We had changed that. Good catch, Jane, thank you.
Also, let's see.
Two, Kathy? Do you know what it was changed to?
And not off the top of my head.
Okay.
Do you remember that?
I don't remember either off the top of my head, maybe.
Yeah, just something.
Resolved, yes. Because again, we, we really tried to scrub these to make sure that that matched those, those.
Right. And then food trucks, I thought I saw in one place where food trucks were allowed to stay on a permanent basis, but on page 10, it says food trucks may not operate more than six hours per calendar month. Maybe I'm just not reading through every bit of it. So are food trucks like for instance behind Magnolia's, would they be allowed to stay permanently back there?
No.
No.
So I just, that was on purpose. We did not think that that was appropriate to do that. So we had added requirements to address that more clearly.
Okay, somewhere in here I saw where it said food trucks may stay on a permanent basis and I can't find it now, but I just maybe, you know, flush through and make sure that the, let's see. Okay, on page 12 on intent, on it, I think intent is so important. It says here, the standards promote design of a comparable size, scale and mass to the existing development character. Sure would like to see you strengthen that promote word to, to something that is a little bit more should like in the, in intent. I know that's cherry picking, but we're nitpicking. But I think that, you know, when we're all gone and another Architectural Review Board, where someone else is looking at this, the word promote is so soft that, you know, I, I'd just like to see something stronger there.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Okay. Somewhere in here, there was a, under, Kathy guided me to it. It's, it's where a resident or an owner of a partial has to provide to the city some sort of a cultural assessment and pay for it. Can you describe what that's about?
Under the demolition section, and we had great discussion about this as well. And again, Greg and Kathy can maybe chime in on this too. The point was for properties that are considered contributing or recommended contributing, again, we really tried to strengthen the requirements and the, put a much more onus on, on a potential applicant, wanted to demolish the structure because we really feel like that should be sort of your last resort. And that was a submission requirement. And again, the purpose of that wasn't to provide, like a whole, not like we have our historic and cultural assessment. It's really more of an inventory of what's out there and, and what may be, what's the right word? What would be impacted by the demolition of that? Like what would we do?
Okay.
Information about what that might be.
It applies to demolition, Jenny? It only applies to demolition? It doesn't apply to anything else happening? Okay.
That's my reference.
For reference, that's page 60, 75 and 76 for the commission.
Okay. So when it comes to demolition, a couple of things that I didn't see there. For instance, there's nothing there in the way of a demolition that actually requires those who are demolishing to either document the interior, to, to, you know, I, I often wondered when the eager property just got torn down, did everyone even look in the dirt to see if there was anything? I mean, it was one of the oldest properties in the city, yet we didn't even take a look to see if anything was dug up. I mean, I just, if you're really talking about, there's not that much left to demolish. I, I pray that we don't have that much more. But the point is, is that it is, I mean, we're finding log cabins in the middle of houses. So I just wonder if archaeologically, we, you know, should be at least paying attention to that. And then on some, some places and I, I think only about demolition. If someone says that it's an economic burden, what, what is their proof of that? I mean, I think that there should be some, some.
Criteria.
So if you look on page, if you look on page 77.
Okay.
Under the review criteria, so there's two, there's two categories of demolition. There's demolition that, of, of buildings that are recognized as being contributing and those that are non-contributing. So if you look at the top of page 77, you see, well, on 76 and 77, the primary criteria for buildings that are contributing is a demonstration that there's no economically viable use of the property. And one of the things that we added on page 77 was some, some tools that the board can use in making that determination though. So those are the things that the board may consider. So if somebody comes in and proposes a demolition of a contributing building and the board, and they're claiming that they can't reuse the building economically rather than just a vague, take their word for it or not, the board can ask for these kinds of documentation to be able to, 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 to make people essentially prove, prove that, prove that you can't develop it economically.
Right, yeah. And, and I like the fact, because if you beta test this against what we have in the district right now that's sitting empty, like on A, a property's current level of economic return, well, there would be none, right? It's already in such disrepair, but you would capture it, you would capture it in, in another area through deliberate neglect. But on the other hand.
Right.
Listing, that a listing of the property for sale or rent, okay, you got price asked. All right, so it has to be compared to something that is reasonable, right?
Right, right, right.
I'm, you know what?
No, you, those are good, those are good questions. We, we actually spent a lot of time thinking about that.
Well, and, and because of, because of the new maintenance code, the demolition by neglect should no longer become, be an issue because we can force that.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, you're going through the same process we did, which is to kind of poke it for loopholes, basically.
Let me go back Jane to the other thing. And in addition to the cultural assessment, I thought we were going to an archaeological assessment for the very reason that Jane was talking about. And you know, when the building comes down, there could be, especially in the downtown area, there could be archaeological finds in there.
Yeah, Nikki helped me find this, didn't we? Added a definition, didn't we?
Yeah, so the archaeological component of that falls in the definition section of the cultural assessment. So that's how we capture that as part of our commitment.
Thank you. So we got that, Jane.
Okay. And I, I think that you've, on the parking spaces and aisle dimensions, I take it you've taken it from a suburban parking lot to a more historic urban so that you're not, so you got that covered too, when it comes to.
I do have a question on that.
Okay.
I do have a question on the parking. So if I read it correctly, page 18, repaired parking and a single family or a two-family dwelling unit had a max and a min of two parking spaces. First of all, can we define, are those two parking spaces like I have two in the garage and I don't count those and I have two in the driveway and I do? Or is that I have two in the garage and then I don't count my driveway? Can we define what that, those parking spaces are defined as?
I'd have to look at this a little more closely. Typically, our code would say you need two spaces and those could be provided in a garage.
I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, typically speaking, a garage does not exist without a driveway. And so if our max and our min is exactly the same, then how do I get two in a garage while not counting the two cars driveway that got up to the garage? That's where my head's going, if our max and min is exactly the same number.
Yeah, I, I want to look at that. Yeah. I, I think we need to look at that. I don't remember that issue coming up and these were largely carried over from the other code. So that's just a, a fine point that we didn't get into. So I don't want to try to guess on that. We'll have to look at that.
And driveways in the historic district historically are not big. So it's not, so, and also garages don't fit modern cars. So you have to be really.
Some of the driveways, some of the driveways are very big.
Yeah, some are. Some are really big.
Yeah, a lot of the time they're behind the front side of the house. It'll be back behind the house is the, the driveway, excuse me, the garage and the driveway kind of runs along the entire property back to the garage. So that's hence my question about the required min to max to, but how do we define those?
You don't want to require too much because, because some of these old garages won't even fit a suburban, you know, an SUV. They'll only fit a small sedan because that's what they were built for.
Right.
So you've got to make, you don't burden.
I'm actually thinking for the min to max four, so that they could have a two-car garage. So I, I'm just looking at changing that differential. If we want to require that they only connect two, I just don't know how you have a two-car garage and only two parking spaces if you also have a driveway.
Exactly.
And in the end though, they can get a waiver to that. So it's, it would be a very simple, it would go, it could be included as part of their proposal. So I mean, I get what you're saying and we can look at that. I just, it's, I don't, I don't think it's that big of an issue to resolve though, should somebody wants to have four cars on their, on their, yeah, on their site.
So, so looking at some of the items that we've discussed, for instance, the, the clarification versus, for the short-term rentals versus the bed and breakfast, that we want to make sure that that's solidified before council sees it, the retail square footage, that sort of thing. Would it be sufficient for us to entertain a motion with direction to staff rather than conditioned on anything, just with direction to staff to work on the items that were called out this evening?
Yes, I would like a little further maybe discussion and clarification from everyone else about the boundary extension for the school. See what the rest of you felt about that and the same with the historic transition within the district. This is something that the ARB did discuss at length too, and whether that, that bounds, those properties should stay within the historic district, sort of counter what council was, was asking. And if so, then we would, we would need to look at, so the code doesn't currently include a historic transition district within there. So that would be a little bit more challenging. I mean, not insurmountable, but the current code doesn't, doesn't have requirements for historic transition.
You mean the current historic district code as, as in front of them, you mean?
Yes, the, what the draft that's in front of you doesn't have requirements. Yes, the, what the draft that's in front of you doesn't have requirements to do what you're suggesting, Jane. We would be retaining the Bridge Street requirement.
So I'm, I'm in favor of the recommendation from staff and the ARB on that particular, particular front, looking to the rest of the commission. A group of people, but in favor, not in favor, take it or leave it. In favor, in favor, in favor, Lance. Mark, did I just see a thumbs up from you? Okay, looks like I can count higher than four, so good there. And then on the school, the 1919 building delineation versus the entire parcel. So keeping, let's do straw poll for keeping the delineation through the center of the school in favor or not in favor. Thumbs up for in favor. Jane, we got more than four on the not in favor. Any other items that you needed clarification on Jenny?
No, I think that's it. Nikki or Greg, is there anything on your end that?
No, I'm just looking at my notes. No, I don't think so. I think that's good.
One item that Jane called out, I was reading something at the time. Greg, you said, yes, we can certainly do that, but I didn't catch that in my notes because my brain was somewhere else.
Yeah, it was strengthening the purpose language, I think is what you're talking about. Where right now it talks about promoting certain kinds of design. I think the idea was that's a little soft. Let's try to find a stronger word, whether it's require or achieve or something like that, I think is the idea, to make that a more active sounding, less passive sounding purpose. Is that right?
Yeah, that was page 12 under intent.
Thank you.
Since that's been the biggest problem, scale and all that, I think it's just you have to push hard to be sure that no one ever looks at that in a soft way.
Yeah.
A couple of small little details. Ones, ones on page 44, these light poles. This is a pet peeve of mine. The base of light poles and parking areas shall either be flush with grade or mounted on a concrete foundation projecting 36 inches above grade. I can tell you in a historic district, those light poles that are sitting on top of 36-inch foundation of concrete look totally out of place. I would like you to have it flush at grade and remove the 36 inches above. It's really a Kroger parking lot looking light pole. And it's happening in the historic district here and there, and it just looks really out of place. So I would suggest that, that's a pet peeve. Signage, I'm just kind of curious. Yeah.
Jane, let's just straw poll that, make sure we have the support of the rest of the commission. I am in favor of removing the 36-inch height and only allowing ground mount. One, two, three, four, we're good. Okay.
Okay. Just want to ask a quick question on signage. It looked like you're, you're being fairly flexible on sign and color. I didn't read through every bit of it, but I noticed when I went past the Toy Emporium, it is just a two-color sign where the sign that was originally there with the little horse all different colors was actually prettier the first time around. What is this sign code doing to, to get that kind of vibrancy in the historic district? Are we, are we getting some flexibility?
Yes, and the code is intended, and the guidelines, to have creativity. That is a little bit of a unique circumstance in terms of they put up something that they didn't get approved. And when asked to, to make a modification to, to get it approved, they went with a more simplistic looking sign. So again, that was, that situation is maybe a little bit different. But yes, I mean, the goal of this is to ensure creative signs, creative design.
Right.
For all of those.
Under this code, the original sign would be able to be had. Is that, I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, would, would they be able to have that original sign if they wanted to in this code?
Yes, and I think part of the challenge with that though was they, was a flat sign. And, and ARB wanted there to be more dimension to it. Am I characterizing that correctly Kathy? So I think when asked to do that, they felt like they wanted something more simplistic. Am I remembering that correctly? Nikki too, maybe? Okay.
Yeah, I think the other issue that I recall off the top of my head is the initial sign that was installed without approval was screen printed on vinyl, which is, which allowed for the multitude of colors but didn't allow for the quality and character over the lifetime of the sign. So really balancing those two items.
Right. And Kathy, you're muted, so I don't, we didn't hear what you just said.
Just what Nikki said.
Okay. I just want to be sure that we can have some variety as we wanted to in Bridge Street, which still is.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I think if you, I think if you look around at the signs that have been approved over the last six months, you'll see that there's a lot of individuality, a lot of vibrancy. But we are looking for things that are going to weather well, and that sign would not have.
Okay. Like I said, I trust ARB's decisions. Last question, and then I'm finished. And that is, do you think at this point now that we are at a place where we have simplified the process, given it much more clarity and made applicants understand what they're getting into when they decide to either build, renovate, buy in the historic district?
Who are you, who are you asking? I think that's the title of the, I think that's the title of the staff report, really. I mean, that's, that really summed up what we've tried to do here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so too. And one of the things that staff has started to do with people who want to do new builds is have them do preliminary rather than, you know, so that they can start to get, see if they're, before they invest a lot of money in plans. So I think that there's a number of procedural things that aren't just in here that we're trying to do to make things simpler as well.
Okay, great work. And I'm sorry I took so much time with questions, but you know, kind of love this.
That's a good pickup.
All right. Look at the rest of the commission, any questions or comments before we move forward with motion on this? Well, these two items. All right, Jane, do you want to do the pleasure of making a motion on, on these items?
I move that we recommend the, the historic Dublin zoning code and rezoning recommendations to city council.
All right, so now we have, is that just motion on?
Oh wait.
First motion?
Maybe I can't recommend to myself.
We have two different cases.
Oh, okay.
Recommend to myself.
Somebody else recommend.
We also have one public comment that we have not gotten to. Ah, yes. Now, that's the one that was supplied in advance of the meeting, correct? Correct. Do you want to read that into record? Yeah.
So this public comment is from Denise King at 170 South River View Street in regards to both the zoning code update and rezoning. Resident of the historic district and an active member of the community, I want the P and Z commission members to know that the process for considering, negotiating and finalizing the code updates and zoning for the historic district has been fulsome. From 2018 to now, there have been about 18 meetings, some large, some small on these issues and the historic Dublin guidelines. Anyone from anywhere in Dublin, residents and business owners have had ample opportunity for input. The issues most important to the historic district and Franklin Street residents are maintaining the character, scale, height, lot coverage setbacks and sightlines that make the historic district what it is. There was a lot of give and take and a lot of buy-in to bring the code and zoning to what is presented to you today. Please build on this comprehensive effort by adding your blessing and forwarding them to city council for adoption. We've talked and talked. It's time to act. Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. And I, I do, Dan, I have a motion on the floor. I considered that for motion one to recommend approval to city council for administrative request for historic district code amendments, including appendices F and G.
Oh, move.
I'm sorry, can you, what was the question to me?
So I, I received a motion from Ms. Fox on motion for approval. I am taking that as motion one to recommend approval to city council for the administrative request that historic district, including appendices F and G. Does that motion stand? Is Jane allowed to make a motion to approve as her planning commission hat is on to herself on the planning?
Yes, yes, she can.
Okay.
So she has full voting authority.
Okay, and then Mr. Grimes, I heard a second from you. Ms. Beal.
Mr. Schneer.
This sounds wrong.
He said yes.
There, I turned myself off. Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Superlax.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal, and I am looking for a, a motion on the rezoning. Now, I'm going to pause before I entertain a motion about the 1919 building. So again, this is a recommendation for approval. But again, we're, we're providing direction to staff that we're not in the building, we're not in favor of dividing the school property at the 1919 building, but rather the entire parcel included.
Just a point. Maybe all parcels involved, that might not be the words you want to use.
School property.
School property. Owner, however.
Yep, I am in favor of that. So Mr. Grimes, do you want to make a motion on that?
Move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Ms. Beal.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Ms. Call.
Yes.
Mr. Superlax.
Yes.
Mr. Fishman.
Yes.
Ms. Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Grimes.
Yes.
Mr. Schneer.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Beal. Well, thank you Kathleen and Greg for joining us tonight. And Jenny, we, we know what hard work went into these two last cases, so thank you very much. And we are glad to play our little tiny, small part in getting this long. And, you know, I can't minimize that enough. You know, you guys did a fantastic job, so thank you for making our jobs easier.
Thank you. I do want to indicate that Nikki actually did much of the heavy lifting on that, so I want to make sure she's included in that.
Oh, yes. Oh, yes.
Greg, yeah, absolutely. She's been a real soldier and put up with us through multiple revisions.
Well, thank you. That's so kind. I have, I have one last deliverable and then we can celebrate, right?
That's right.
All right. Well, thank you for joining us this evening. At this point, we're two communications. I just have one small, I don't, that came out from today's. But staff, do you have anything for commissioners this evening? Yeah, so, oh, you want to go Jenny?
I, I was just gonna hope everybody know, I mean, I'm sure everybody noticed the absence of Claudia and her not here tonight. Hopefully, everybody read their email that she has taken a position elsewhere and went to the city of Powell to be their planning director. And the timing of that didn't work out for her to tell you in person. I know she sent you all an email, but I just want to make sure you all knew, knew what was happening with that. And we have posted her position, big shoes to fill, but, you know, we're, we're working through it. But I just wanted to acknowledge all her time, even though she's not here with us. And I know, I know you all do, and her kind words are as well, which she appreciated. So that's all I have, sorry.
Thank you, Jenny. And yes, she, she has our appreciation. She helped mold Dublin the last decades, and so she certainly has our appreciation. And we wish her best of luck in, it's always nice to have a new challenge. And so best of luck in her, in her new adventure.
I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items? I just have a real quick one. We saw tonight the sodium lights that came out, that high-pressure sodium lights that, in that development language. While I understand that typically we don't go back and read as a development language until a next application comes, if we could do a quick audit of our code of the, the items that don't require an application and change coming forward, it's always nice to learn a lesson once and not have to relearn it and over again. So if we could just go through if there are any other lighting that that kind of sparks a, hey, yeah, you know, there's this other thing that's now not very popular. It's always nice to have a prompt in a current application that helps us do some cleanup before somebody either comes forward and wants it or holds us to it. And it's just nice to get in front of, in front of. That was the only other item I had. Anyone else? Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
New Year. Well done.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone, for joining us tonight. Always a pleasure to meet with you for making planning commission fun.
Thanks, all.
Take care.
Thank you. Bye.
Night, everyone.